Welcome, everybody, to the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, November 14th. Again, this is a hybrid meeting, so the members of the public are welcome to join us in person or remotely. In person, we are at the Norton Media Center, 184 West Main Street. You can join online via video using the link available in the agenda, or through the Zoom Meeting app with meeting ID 638-929-1060. And yes, after two and a half years, that is memorized. There is also a phone number, should you wish to dial in by phone directly. Maybe it will also be available on Norton Cable Access, Channel 15. For future sessions, if you wish to submit questions to the board ahead of the meeting, please email them to Brian Carmichael, Town Staff, seated to my right, so they can be read into the record and forwarded to the board as appropriate. So with that introduction out of the way, I will get into our agenda for the meeting this evening. Just making sure that we're good from a technical perspective. You ran out of the room, sorry.
Oh, no, just to put the screen off there.
Okay. So I don't believe we have anything to discuss this evening in terms of Planning Board business and policies. Brian, I'm not sure if you have an update on the town technical transition. We can cover that at the end or in our next session, if you want to do that.
Sure.
I don't think we have any bills or warrants to discuss at this time. We don't have any minutes to approve. We do have a fairly lengthy agenda this evening, so we do not have a set time as a board where we call the meetings due to darkness, so to speak, since A, it's already dark, and B, the Red Sox aren't playing right now. But we will try and keep things moving along, so if you've spoken in previous session about a particular item, and all of your comments are already kind of part of the record, I would ask you to please keep those comments brief and to the point wherever possible. So the first item on our agenda is the execution of a decision. We have special permit 20735 for a 280 Newton Avenue. This is an application to consider a duplex. This was considered previously, and the public hearing was closed on October the 10th, so we are no longer accepting any public comment or questions as it relates to this application. So this is purely to the board to discuss any conditions that we would like to see as part of this discussion, and then render a decision on the special permit itself. Brian, I'm not sure if you want to pull up just the site plan for 280, just to make sure that we have it on screen, but I think that we've talked about this one in a couple of meetings, so we're generally familiar with what we're talking about here. So I'll ask the board if there's any points that they would like to raise in terms of specific conditions outside of the standard conditions that we want to discuss as it relates to this special permit decision.
I think they had established that they were okay with us restricting parking on Meadowbrook.
Yes, the parking should be restricted to the lot and not on the private way.
Do we need to condition that?
We can condition it. I'm not sure if ours would necessarily be the enforcing authority on that. I think the likely enforcing authority of that would be the tow truck companies that get called repeatedly if that becomes an issue.
The only other thing I had was the applicant advised that the site could accommodate two more parking spaces and still comply with stormwater or whatever wanted to condition.
That's up to, I think that's up to our discretion. If we wanted to ask them to include those two parking spaces, they may use them on grass regardless, even if they don't pave them outside of our condition. And I know, and did we want to include, I know the applicant has said, well, signed that they're open to this, just if there's anything in the existing building that the Historical Society wanted to catalog or anything like that, that they could do that. I'm not sure if that's a condition that we need to do, but.
They seemed open to it, so.
Yeah.
I don't think it would be a problem. We could add it. I don't know if we can enforce it, but just kind of.
Yeah. It's a nudge to make that connection.
They volunteered.
Yeah, definitely. And obviously, the concerns from the neighbors are in terms of the use of the property and past issues.
That weighs heavy on me with the standards we're showing your special permit.
That's probably the most significant part.
Okay.
We didn't get any neighbor that stepped up in support.
I think we had people in support of the idea, but given the history of the property, I think there was a challenge. That was, yes, that is correct. Yeah, the applicant did represent this new ownership, new management, a new use in terms of a different age group of the property, but.
To be able to.
It's a question, yeah.
And we're talking about an expansion.
Yes. Is there anything else that we want to discuss? Otherwise, I would look for a motion. In general, I think it's simpler if the motions are to approve, and then we can vote in whichever direction we may choose.
A motion to approve SP 20735.
Okay. And is that a motion to approve with?
With conditions as stated.
With conditions as stated, okay. And Laura, is that?
Seconded.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve with conditions. So I will go through the roll in person, and Wayne, I will come around to you in a bit once we get through, once we get past Alan. So Wayne, before we go forward with the vote, did you want to add anything to the discussion as it relates to the motion?
No.
Okay, thank you. So Eric, I will start with you on a motion to approve.
Yes.
Jim?
No.
Steve?
No.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
No.
Wayne?
No.
And I will vote yes. I believe that is three to four.
Yes, three yeses, four noes.
Three to four no. So with the special permit needing a supermajority of five out of seven, the special permit is not approved. So Brian, we can work on the decision for that and get that issued in the coming weeks.
Sure.
We're now going to move on to the public hearing section of our agenda. The first item up is continuation discussion for definitive subdivision 20336 for Zero Reservoir Street. I have a number of people from the applicant's team here, just to provide an update on what has been discussed as it relates to conservation and other things with property. So I'll let Mr. Campbell get set up there as you just give an introduction, and just make, keep an eye on the, our technical cameraman here to see if there's anything we need to reposition or anything so people can see it on camera, okay? Okay, so.
Mr. Chair, thank you. For the record, Edward Corcoran, I'm an attorney in Milton, representing the developer, joined by Cam Campbell, who's the engineer. I think this is the third night we've been here relative to this application for definitive subdivision approval. Last time, I think, we showed some significant modifications to the plan that were, I think, responsive directly to some of the requests from the board, particularly addressing issues of open space, conservation, access, preservation of public access to the Norton Reservoir. And since the last meeting, I know I was involved in a meeting with you, Mr. Chair, and other staff, including Brian and Conservation, where we discussed more specifically some of the issues around what type of conservation, preservation would you like to see. I've since submitted for this board's review a draft of a conservation restriction, which we would be prepared to present to the Conservation Commission and the Board of Selectmen at their next opportunities. We also presented a draft of a homeowners' association wherein homeowners' association would be responsible for maintaining, not maintaining the public access and the area subject to conservation restriction, also the road and all of the utilities and other infrastructure until at such time as the town was in a position to accept the road with respect to that. There are a couple of minor modifications to the plan that I think Cam can run through. One, obviously, the nomenclature renamed the area that's shown in green as conservation restriction land and not tree preservation land, but a couple of other minor changes in response to requests from the board that Cam can walk through now.
Minor change that took place was at request of the board was originally, we had the walkway, a four parking spot here with a walkway to a viewing area, and the board requested to bring it all the way around and tie it back into the roadway, which we've done, is a 15-foot easement along the side property line with a three-foot wide stone dust path that loops around and you can continue it using the sidewalk. That's the major change, I believe, that's always done since the last meeting.
So with that, I think we're hopeful that, well, obviously, open up to the board for questions and answer as best we can, and otherwise, I think we're potentially ready to close the hearing, hopefully, favorable vote to see.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just to restate, all of the areas in green are what is being specified under the CR?
That's correct. Approximately 15 and a half acres of what's now wooded open space that were preserved in its current natural condition. About 56% of the site.
And is the, and I looked through the CR, is it based largely on the one Mr. Thomas said the Conservation Director had sent you in terms of the wording and all of the pieces?
Yes, very similar. I've done that and a draft of a CR that I did on another project in another community. The language is remarkably similar. It's really a form that has been created by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, so that there is a uniformity to the way that those CRs work. They have to ultimately be approved by the Secretary of Environmental Affairs. There's a process that takes it through the Conservation Commission, acceptance by the Select Board on behalf of the town, and then approval by the Secretary of Environmental Affairs before it can become effective.
So I'll turn to the board for questions as it relates to the property as a whole or the change as requested. Steve, I saw you raise your hand real quickly.
The shoreline parcel, is there a house being placed there currently, proposed?
There's a proposed building area right here.
Is that parcel going to be offered to the town for purchase?
No, we decided on doing the public access through the parcel with an easement and around the site. That's what Conservation Commission would rather have seen.
So would that whole parcel be an easement for public access?
No.
Or just along the edge?
You have this parking area along the edge and the whole back of these, including the back of this parcel.
That was the direction they got from Conservation? That the town wouldn't be buying the parcel, basically, was the word that you got, basically?
Right. We did offer either option, the town could purchase the entire parcel, or if it preferred, we'd have this public easement area, develop a public overlook in conjunction with the direction from Conservation and other towns.
Even though Conservation had mentioned it, could we possibly put it up? Because it would have to go through a town meeting, right, to purchase the land? Could we make it a decision for the community?
The town manager has jurisdiction over all town land. That helps.
It's not town land right now.
It's not town land yet.
Right.
There's, I would say, the guidance that they've received from the town staff is that the town probably would not be interested in that. There's nothing to stop any resident of town from putting forward a petition or article at town meeting and suggesting it, and.
You would also have to appropriate the funds.
We would have, that would also be a part of the town meeting we'd have to deal with at that point, but I'm sure that the owner of the property just wants, just wants the checks to clear, to be blunt with it. So the town would have the option to purchase it just like anybody else.
But the entirety of the shoreline would be publicly accessible?
Yes, it's protected by easement. It's this dark dashed line right here.
And how far into the shoreline does that go, roughly?
It's off of the shoreline.
Off the water, rather?
Yes, because the shoreline is technically a wetland, so you're at least, I'd say, at least 30 feet, because we're outside of the 25-foot buffer here.
Okay. And is there any public parking for access to the trail?
Yeah, there's four, proposed four spots.
Laura, I saw your eyes told me that you wanted to ask a question.
Yeah. I have more comments than I have questions, I guess, and I apologize, I drafted this up to share with everybody on screen, and I can't find it on campus, but I made a printout of it, so I'm just going to read. Actually, if you don't mind, I am going to share the screen from moment, just so we can focus on the area of question. So with regards to specifically the areas that I'm, for lack of a better word, concerned about are lots four and five. And you can see here the 25-foot no disturbance zone, the second line here is the 100-foot wetland buffer, and you can see the grade from lot four all the way to the reservoir, and it's approximately 14 feet straight down, well, not straight downhill, but downhill. And while I do appreciate the attempts that have been made to mitigate some of our concerns, I'm not entirely comfortable that they go enough. And so I jotted down all of my concerns, and what I figured out is that it's a number of cascading obstacles that we're trying to overcome, or I'm trying to overcome with regards to lots four and five specifically. The Wetland Protection District, in which lot five sits almost entirely and lot four minimally are within that district, meaning they have an elevation less than 105 feet. Construction of single-family homes is permitted there, but this is a subdivision, and lot four requires compliance with the subdivision control laws, specifically the design guidelines, 5.1. The first basically states that design and construction shall reduce the following B: The area over which existing vegetation will be disturbed, especially on land within 200 feet of a river, pond, water course, or stream, or having a slope of more than 15%, which I understand this doesn't, but there is still a slope. Lot four and some of lot five are, sorry, lot five and some of lot four are easily within 200 feet of the reservoir. And it concerns about the number of mature trees removed and mitigation was offered there. I'd like to bolster that a little bit if the applicant is amenable. I'll get to that in a second. Blockage of vistas through new development. There was a mitigant that was offered, but there will still be construction on lots four and five. It is not going to be an area that is going to be readily available to anybody who wants to just go walking through that section. Also, within 5.1 MJ alteration in chemical constituents, chemical constituents are any chemicals which are added to a base liquid. In this case, it's in reference to groundwater and water supply. It further goes on to state that the proposed subdivision plan shall be designed in a manner that will preserve the existing land and the form in its natural state insofar as particular by minimizing grading. So I had some concerns about the specific grading here, and I understand this, I was told at a prior meeting that, yes, we intend to grade these, and unfortunately, that just raises further concerns within the design standards that say, will preserve the existing land form by minimizing grading and the erosion or stripping of vegetation that may result there from particularly development on steep slopes. I'm not sure this is quite steep under the letter of the law, but there is definitely a slope, and it says that we should try and avoid grading that area. And then further on, it says not to create adverse impacts on public services and facilities serving the subdivision, including those that are off-site, such as the public water supply. Potential adverse impacts will be mitigated in connection with the approved subdivision, which, referencing the public water supply, then brings up our next obstacle. This entire property is located within the Water Resource Protection District, directly of what's our public water supply. So I originally was not a fan of development on lots three, four, and five. I have reconsidered my position on lot three. I have not reconsidered my position on lot four and five. I think, given everything I have described up to this point, and not that any one individually is problematic, but might take it collectively, it produces a larger obstacle. And given the kind of ecologically sensitive, critical area in which you want to develop, I cannot find an adequate mitigant available on lot four and five other than restricting development there. So I am not in favor of approving development of those lots. Further, I had mentioned some additional mitigation that I would like to see and I'd like to raise for consideration. I do very much appreciate the conservation restriction. I would like to also raise for consideration by the board another condition that only be, to ensure the removal of only the minimal number of trees necessary to construct the road, the residential subdivision, and provide for its stormwater management prior to any work. The applicant contract with a certified arborist, who has qualifications and tree risk assessment, and they should be retained until the completion of the project. The arborist should develop a plan that will assess an inventory of the site, identify any trees that are of particular vitality, and the preservation, either due to their size, species, health, proximity, et cetera. Those trees should, or that those areas of those trees should be protected from construction with an ample perimeter, be flagged or fenced in some manner to protect those identified areas and trees and their root structures. And in addition to the conservation restriction presented, I'd like the board to consider a condition that the following additional deed conservation restriction be applied to all land within reservoir estates, whether it's conveyed to a private buyer or a homeowners' association, and that would prohibit any irrigation systems on any properties, broad application of pesticides, and the broad application of lawn fertilization.
Okay. There's a lot there.
Yes, and I haven't written, I'd love to share it with you, but I can't right now.
Okay.
And I understand this is a lot to consider, and I apologize, I was not here for that last meeting.
So I think some of this, just to talk amongst ourselves, and I'll go to the applicant in a second, I think. I think if you have, if you and/or other members of the board feel that lots four and five don't allow us to meet the design standards, I think that it would be, I think that would need to be something that we discuss, and the applicant would need to be okay with that, putting that either under the CR or something like that. I think if we can't say we would approve it, but we don't like those lots, because after this, I assume that the residential properties could potentially be developed as of right. So it wouldn't necessarily be something that we would see again in terms of each individual house.
Right.
In terms of the arborist, you're looking.
And that actually raises a problem within the Water Resource Protection District, because there are certain things in there that are allowed, but only by special permit, and they may not come back to us if it was a single-family buy right.
Right, exactly. So.
If we didn't approve this by right, this whole property could only be one house, though?
They could potentially do some kind of A and R or something like that, depending on how they would want to approach it. So I don't think we could make a determination as to what they could turn it into.
I mean, it could be a farm, too.
Yes.
That's what.
Yeah, yeah. And just to confirm, so your point about the arborist was to try to draw a distinction from.
As opposed to.
Clearcutting the entire lot and then developing with a conservation restriction over new grass.
It's more of the, I want the decision of which trees are cut down based on conservation and stormwater management and the conservation of trees, not the, it's convenient to put something here and I want to clearcut this. So I want the roads and the parcels to be a tertiary concern when deciding which trees come down.
Okay. Okay.
So I don't want them cutting the ones because those are convenient and that's why we won't put them. I want somebody to actually design it and say, this would be best for this site.
Okay.
In an arborist's expert opinion.
Okay. And I think I understand your points about fertilizer and things like that, just as with its relationship to the reservoir, basically.
Yes, and it's not even that, lot four and five, I'm never going to be able to get past. Everything's just going to roll down there. I don't want anything developed on it, because anything they do on that site is just going to go into the reservoir. But I'm also concerned, there's a retention basin that is right there, and that's going to go into the ground, and eventually, everything that goes into the ground is going to go into the reservoir, and it is very close proximity to the reservoir. So I have significant concerns about, and I understand that I can't control any other property that sits on the reservoir right now, but I can control this, and I don't want to see any more nitrogen and phosphates and algae blooms and having clean rings up and fish kills. And, yeah, that's our public drinking water supply, and the rules are telling me I am to protect it.
Okay.
You're going to have to use snow and ice treatments as possible.
Oh, thank you, okay, yeah. No salt.
There is an approved form of chemical that's approvable in this, in this context. I recently had it addressed in another project immediately next to wetlands. I don't have the name of it off the top of my head, but we can sort of agree that that would be, that the, that would be the appropriate form of snow and ice treatment that would be acceptable.
So I'll go to Mr. Corcoran. In terms of those discussions, we have fertilizer and snow and ice removal tying to a, and those potential conditions would probably be best left to the homeowners' association. those potential conditions would probably be best left to the homeowners' association as part of those deeds and everything else, if that was something irremenable to. The question about the arborist and the general disposition of the two lots close to the reservoir, I'll, do you have any response to those questions or comments in terms of, in terms of that? Obviously, if you say, "I'm not comfortable taking those lots off the board," that's your decision, and we move forward with that decision.
Understood. Let me address the arborist first. I generally don't have an issue with retention of arborists to do tree preservation. They're important, they've been important in several projects that I've been involved with elsewhere, and they did a really effective job of helping design how the open space was preserved. My caution would be that, I think the layout of the road is pretty well-defined. It has to work in a certain way, it has to meet DPW standards for straightaways and everything else, and it, and so, yeah, there's likely to be some breakage with respect to trees. It's not, I don't know if that's the right word, but, but I, but I, we would commit to using arborists to help properly locate and site dwellings on properties. Trees can be preserved within yard area, et cetera. You can have a vigorous tree preservation plan that protects root systems during construction, parking heavy equipment away from root structures and most things. I'm familiar with those types of things. I'd be happy to draft a form of tree preservation plan that would get at that type of concern. I have a couple of their views recently, and I could submit that for the, for the board's review, potentially as an exhibit to a decision. With respect to lots four and five, I'd be, I'd be hesitant to say we would be willing to take those off the board. They are subject, their development is subject to other special permit processes. I think it's not an as-of-right that you can just go pull a building permit and stick a foundation in the ground. There are other special permit processes associated with wetland protection and resource protection that I think a property owner would have to go through in order to get permission to build a dwelling, and a lot of that would be very intensive and very locus-specific as to how the resource areas would be protected during and after construction and maintenance. So I would, I would be hesitant to say we'd take those off the table. We'd certainly welcome addressing, mitigating measures around specific design and construction, and that we would, and that, you know, we understand that Conservation Commission would have significant say in whether and how an order of conditions would be issued that would allow construction on each of those properties.
Okay.
I don't know if you want to add to that.
Yeah, I mean, lot, lot five will definitely have to go through conservation, and they're strict, and there's regulations you have to follow to meet, to meet, get an order of conditions to be able to build. And then lot four is, part of it touches the 100-foot buffer area, and it's also fully within the Water Resource District. So I'm not 100% sure if lot four would require conservation. I don't believe it would. And then, I'm not, is Water Resource, I'm not sure if it will require a special permit for that. I believe it would if you do a certain amount of cutting of soils on site.
May also end on fill.
Yeah.
Okay. I think that answers all the comments. And in some cases, the answer is no, and we understand that, and that's, okay.
I wouldn't say it's, it's a straight no, I'd say it's a qualified no.
Yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah.
I appreciate your comments, they're certainly well-considered.
I, I do understand your comments with regards to the roadway, how you explain it made sense as well, but I really would like to see an arborist used for the placement on the lots.
I think, I think that's certainly an appropriate condition and easy to...
May not, may not be easy once you see which trees they pick out. That's a whole other discussion. Okay. Other questions or comments from members of the board at this time? Wayne, I'm going to call you out specifically, he says you're virtual here, and I can't, I see your face in a small portion of the screen and not right next to me, so.
You want to say?
Thank you. So additional questions or comments as it relates for, from the board for this? Otherwise, I'll ask if there are members of the public who'd like to make any additional comments as well.
I'd like to just agree with Laura about the lots four and five. It's, I wouldn't want to see any buildings there, and if there was no buildings allowed there, the road might be reasonably repositioned instead of trying to reach there.
But you also need a road for the access from Laura, that would be just a poor parking spots.
If that's the lot.
Honestly, if they let them, left them alone, we don't need a scenic road. Just walking paths in there, and anybody could just go in. I'd rather not have them put in parking spots.
I wouldn't want a path built, really. Well, I think the parking spots on the edge are okay, but I don't think a built path is necessary. I'd still like the public to feel like they can park in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you've got to park on the side of the road or something.
I, I think I would recommend something that we did for Pine Street, where it was just a dirt-cleared area, small.
And that's essentially what's here.
Yeah, not anything paved with...
Yeah, there's one on Leonard Street at the, the new warehouses. There's like a dirt area.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, ultimately, the applicant has stated that the, they feel that the lots would need to go through additional processes with conservation or other member, other town parties, but the lots that we have in front of us are the lots that we have in front of us, and that's what we would vote on. That's, that's how I look at it.
Yep. That's good.
So I'll, I'm not saying a whole lot of people jumping to ask questions here on the board, so I'll see if there's any members of the public, either virtually or in person, who'd like to make any additional questions or comments to the board as it relates to this project. If you are using the Zoom meeting and you would like to use the reactions function, you can quote-unquote "raise your hand," pop up with a little yellow emoji hand. So I'll ramble on here for 10 seconds to see if anybody does that. And my rambling is apparently not very good this evening, so not seeing a bit of jump here. So to members of the board, are we comfortable closing the public hearing at this time? I know the applicant stated that they were potentially ready to close the, close the hearing. They mentioned the, the chemical for snow and ice removal and the potential arborist, potential language could be, we could work on as part of a decision. So I'll say, Mr. Corcoran, do you have anything else that you want to say prior to me continuing this line of discussion?
Only to say thank you. Appreciate your thoughtful comments and, and the process.
Okay. So do we have any questions or concerns before we potentially close the public hearing? And I'd look for a motion.
A motion to close the public hearing for definitive plan 20336.
Thank you, Alan, for the motion, and Steve for the second. Is any further discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? Okay. Hearing none. Eric?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura?
No. Oh, closing the public hearing, yes, sorry.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. So the public hearing is now closed. We will not be accepting further comments, questions, et cetera. Does the board feel that we want to execute a decision this evening? Are there additional consi, conditions that we want to consider in further depth? Would we like to make approval contingent on specific conditions, and we can decide the wording in a further meeting? I am at the board's pleasure as to the direction.
I'm okay with it. Go, Brandon. Obviously, the things that we discussed are geared to, like, with arborist situation conservation.
If anybody is not ready to vote in this meeting, I would suggest stating so. Otherwise, I would look for a motion to do so.
I don't know how to word the whole thing.
Sorry?
I don't know how to word the whole thing.
The motion would be to approve definitive subdivision 20336 with conditions, and then you would list out any of the conditions that you'd like to see added, and we could work on the specific language of those in follow-up.
It might be a good idea for someone else to handle that? Get rid of that, huh?
Okay, so in terms of, we can also list out specific conditions and make sure that we've covered them all. And then we would make a motion with conditions stated, if we wanted to do it that way. So the conditions would be the conservation, the conservation restriction that's been proposed, with potential updates to include fertilizer and snow removal chemicals.
Pesticides.
Pesticide, fertilizer, pesticides, and snow removal chemicals.
Irrigation systems.
And irrigation systems. We had the arborist to help with the specific preservation and sighting of trees on individual lots.
If somebody wants to make that motion, that'd be fine.
And if we wanted to have a specific condition calling out the public access easements as shown, we could do that as well.
I like the way it is right there.
Well, it's the site plan, so that's what we're approving.
Right, but what I'm saying is, you guys have talked about maybe getting rid of the actual walking path, and I, I think clearly delineated areas for people to walk and use helps structure that, so the lots, people aren't going to be looking for lot lines out there, and also near in someone's backyard, or like the walking path.
I think there were cart paths on this property.
There may be.
There's a stone hearth, and I thought paths came to and from that.
There are a bunch of trails that go along the water, and they've been out there for years, I don't know how worn in they are now, but...
So the motion would be public access easements and walking paths as shown in site plan by rights.
Yes.
Okay, so that's three conditions plus standard conditions. Are there any additional conditions?
Mr. Chair, would you want to incorporate the, declareate the homeowners' trust and homeowners' association?
Thank you. Yeah, I think we've referred to the homeowners' association, that that would be, yeah, and the road, the road and utilities is, et cetera, is under the authority of the homeowners' association until, until such time as the town may or may not choose to accept the road. Yeah, so that would be a good one. So those are, are there any additional conditions that anybody would like to propose or include in this decision? Again, we're voting on the plans as submitted, so...
Again, I, I'd like to retain the ability of the town to, if I could, you know, if there's time to convince other boards of the value of the shoreline, is that, whether, if we don't accept it, then it's still just their land, but it...
I don't, I don't see a harm in a condition that...
That three-year...
That the applicant is, that the applicant provides the town an opportunity to purchase the land. The town has the opportunity to purchase the land now.
Okay, fair enough.
So...
But haven't they already stated that they're not going to?
Yeah.
Or just kind of throwing it out there to throw it out there?
Pretty much. But, I mean, it's something that if town meeting wants to discuss it, town meeting can discuss it and try to appropriate the funds.
Again, I, I, to reflect on Juniper Beach and what it would be like to not have that now, we could maybe double the amount of Juniper Beaches we have.
So those are the conditions that we've discussed. Is there anything further that we wanted to add? Otherwise, I think Steve, you were looking to motion as discussed.
I don't know if I can motion all that, I did the other question.
Well, I think we've, we've noted them down, so you would just be motioning to approve with conditions as stated.
Okay, so how do I have to word this again, Laura?
Motion to approve definitive site plan 20336 with conditions as just discussed.
And that's to approve the subdivision, not the site plan?
Isn't this a definitive?
It's definitive subdivision, that's it.
Subdivision, sorry.
Just crossing my Ts and dotting my As.
Sorry, you're right.
Nope, okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve with conditions as discussed. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Okay. Hearing none, I will go through the roll. Eric?
No.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura?
No.
Alan?
No.
Wayne?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. I believe that is...
Three to three. Four to three.
Four to three, yes?
Yes.
Brian, do you know if a definitive needs a supermajority or just a simple majority?
Not on hand.
Okay.
I believe it's a, I believe it's a simple, but I'm not...
Okay. Okay, so if it is a simple majority...
It's a simple.
Yeah, I think it is simple when it's just supermajority.
Special permit, yeah. Okay. So we're four to three in favor, so we can look through the decision at our next session. And if there's anything that we need to address, we can address it in terms of the specific wording and move forward from there.
Do you have a, a form of decision that you'd like assistance from me in drafting before the next meeting or not?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And the next meeting would be where we do a decision?
Our next meeting is, our next meeting is in two weeks. The, the guidelines, timelines for filing a decision are escaping my mind at the moment, but it goes through our process, then it goes to the clerk, and then it gets stamped, and then...
Okay, thank you.
The next item on our agenda is special permit 20381, 300 South Washington Street. I'm not sure if people saw the email earlier this evening. The applicant did request a continuance to December, late in the game here. Do we have any questions or comments related to that? Okay. Look for a motion to continue.
Assumed.
Seven.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Thank you, Jim and Laura. And I'll go through the roll. Eric?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. That item is continued. Next on our, on our agenda is special permit 20475 for Zero Rear Eddie Street. I see people waiting in the wings to come up here, so this is an application for four duplexes with a common driveway in a wetland district. This is continued from September the 12th and October the 10th. So as the applicant gets set up here, they'll get ready.
They didn't have a stand, I'm sorry, so...
That's okay.
The chair will suffice.
We make do with what we have.
Maybe Craig, you hold the other end of this thing.
Here.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Are you all set?
So you can just go ahead and present any updates since the last session, and then we'll go on to...
Okay, yeah, for the record, Margaret Bacon, I'm owner and engineer, civil site engineering, and I'm here with Craig from Rim Engineering regarding the, uh, the special permit request for zero Eddie Street there. So, uh, what we've done since the last time we've been here is, um, we did get the stormwater approved through the Conservation Commission, so that's, that's done. The fire department's satisfied with our latest revision to the, the water system with the hydrant placement. We have submitted to the, uh, the Water and Sewer Department a revised, uh, water plan, which they seem to be satisfied with. What else has been done? I've included, based on the comments from the last meeting, I included guardrails on the, on the project, uh, the entranceway coming down the hill. So I did include guardrail along that, that edge of the, the driveway. We did include snow removal areas, and we have submitted a HOA for the submission. I think that much covers most of the comments from the last meeting.
Okay. I know during the last session, we had discussions about whether we felt the site met the frontage requirements. I think the determination was that even though part of the frontage is, uh, not necessarily at ground level, it still qualifies under the bylaw. Did we have additional questions or comments on the layout? I think, thank you for the, um, potential guardrails on the entrance roads. I know there was a grade on that coming in.
Yeah, actually, the grade coming down the hill, uh, the design grade, uh, four and a half percent. Here, coming down the hill, we have a four and a half percent.
Yeah, it's right at that, um...
It's right where it drops off to the, to the reservoirs.
And it's right, and it's right where the curve is too, as well, to a point, so, yeah. Okay. So additional questions or comments for the applicant at this time? Again, that's showing two of the four proposed duplexes on the comment that...
Oh, I'll put up, this shows the entire site, this one here.
You didn't know you were going to have an active rolls, Craig, did you? Okay.
I'm just curious if the applicant saw the letter from the abutter's attorneys about the frontage issues, or if they digested it and wanted to comment on it at all.
Sure. So, uh, Ms. Bacon, I was, did you, are you aware of the, the letter and the question about frontage from the, from the abutters?
Is this a recent, how, a recent letter?
November second, if I, if I remember.
So...
It wasn't best on to me, um...
Okay, so you're, that, you're not, you're not, okay. Thank you. So Alan, did you want to, um...
We can wait, so, yeah.
Okay. And I know the, the abutters have made similar comments when this site was discussed in the past, uh, so it may be something that the, that the owner is already aware of, but... Okay. Additional questions for the applicant that they can answer in terms of the site? As they mentioned, they have gone for water and fire and conservation. And they've submitted the homeowners' association and, um, all of those documents as well. If we don't have any additional questions for the applicant at this time, I'd go to see if there are any members of the public who have questions they'd like to ask the board. Okay. Are there any, any members of the public either here in person or joining us virtually this evening who'd like to make a comment as it relates to this, uh, as it relates to this project? Please raise your hand virtually or in person. I do see a hand in the back. If you don't mind just kind of tucking that into the back of the chair there, and I'll ask them to come up to the podium so they can speak, please. I apologize for the tight corner in here, it's not exactly, uh, not always conducive to our purposes sometimes, but, sir, if you'd like to come forward?
Members of the board, thank you for hearing me. My name is Matthew Costa. I'm an attorney with an office at seventy-three Washington Street in Taunton, and I represent Deborah White and the Winslow Farm Animal Awareness Corp., and they're direct abutters to this project on the south side of, of Meadowbrook Pond. And I, I thank you for hearing from me because I know at the last meeting, a representative of my client spoke, um, but when I, we reviewed the, the issues, we wanted to follow up specifically on the frontage requirement that was mentioned. And so, um, I'm glad to hear that. It's, it sounds like the board saw my letter of November second, twenty twenty-three that describes the, the frontage issue, um, as my clients here, or on behalf of my clients. And, um, I'm kind of, I'm actually, uh, going to state for the record that I'm surprised that there was, um, a response to the board that these lots do meet the legal frontage requirement, because that's a state law stan-, a statewide standard, it's not just specific to the town of Norton. Frontage is a requirement for zoning and subdivision across the state, so there's different cases and statutes that apply statewide. And the Norton zoning bylaw, uh, it can state some additional standards, but it can't, it can't just, um, ignore what the state, uh, law is. And so in my letter, I provided, uh, uh, detail, but I'd like to just, just give you a very simplified explanation for our position. So basically, under state law, frontage is not just a boundary on a public way. Frontage is also, is a boundary on a public way that provides access to the lot, and the access has to be from within the lot's boundaries. And that requirement can't be, uh, avoided by providing some alternative means of access. So, like, on a plan such as this, it shows a common driveway, but before you get to the common driveway on the frontage issue, you have to look at the lot by itself and say, does that lot, from within its four corners, have the ability to access that public way? In this case law that's very directly on point, this lot is well-known for having this, um, guardrail that basically, uh, separates it from, uh, Taunton Avenue, with the exception of the one opening where the existing driveway is. And this case law that says, this holding from the State Supreme Judicial Court that says where you have a guardrail that blocks access to a lot, that's not frontage, because that's, um, in the, the wording they've used in the, in the cases, that's a distinct physical impediment to access. So if, if I may just point out our, our position for, for the benefit of the public and the board, and I, and, and I apologize if I'm not aware of something, like, if Mass DOT approves an opening in a, in a, in a, um, in, in a guardrail that provides access, then that changes everything. But from what I've seen, the plan shows the guardrail, and the only proposal is to use this existing driveway for access. So if we look at Lot One, it's, Lot One, there's a guardrail that completely separates Taunton Avenue from the lot. That's just a black and white issue. I, I feel like that, um, there's cases that speak to this. So I don't understand why there would be any kind of input that that constitutes frontage. It's just, the, the guardrail's there, and you could get even deeper into it, you could say that's a guardrail plus this unbelievably steep slope, but you can just look at the guardrail by itself and say, well, that's, uh, that's an impediment. You can't say that there's a driveway that goes through a different lot that provides access and therefore there's frontage. So as far as we're concerned, um, that lot does not have frontage. And then the interesting thing about this plan is that when you go to Lot Two, there's an opening there, but there's an opening, and then there's, there's the, there's a slope, and then there's the pond. So there you have basically an opening into the pond, and the buildable part of the lot, the lot area as defined in your bylaw, the minimum lot area, is on the other side of the pond. So it's impossible to use this opening to get to your lot area, and therefore you have, what's proposed is the opening, the driveway goes immediately to the side and goes through an abutting lot. And so even though there's actually an opening there, it doesn't actually provide access to the area of the lot that's usable. So even there, the way this is laid out, it's kind of a unique situation where there's an opening, but it, it's an opening to a pond. And so that's, our position is that it's not frontage, because the pond is a distinct physical impediment. That's what the cases say. So one can't drive through the pond, it's not, that doesn't provide access, so even that's not frontage. The next lot, Lot Three, it's the situation of the guardrail, the slope, and the pond. There's absolutely no access to Lot Three. The buildable area is all the way on the other side of the pond. There's no way that that constitutes frontage. And then the last lot is kind of interesting, because the guardrail ends near the endpoint of, the southerly endpoint of the lot, but the front of the lot's in an industrial district, and your bylaw says that the frontage has to provide physical and legal access. And this case law that says that if, you can't use an industrial area where in, in Norton, residential uses are prohibited in the industrial district. So you, you can't cross through the industrial area to get to a, a residential use. So there we have the pond, the guardrail, plus the industrial district, all blocking access. So my client's position is that this plan, to get this density of the four duplexes, would require variances for lots with no frontage, but having access by a common driveway or a full subdivision approval to build a road to, to, to achieve a layout that's similar to this. But we suspect that with a full subdivision approval, you would, this layout wouldn't be achievable, because the way this is, I, I believe the way this is laid out, the road is part of, this driveway road is part of the lot, counts towards the lot area. And so if this was designed as a, as a definitive subdivision plan, other changes would be needed. So our position respectfully is that the special permit for the shared driveway should be denied, because it's proposing access for lots with no frontage, and this density is unfairly detrimental to my client, who owns the land on the other side of the pond, when in reality, what you have, this is in reality, our position of what you have. You have, with all of this distance along, uh, Taunton Avenue, you have one opening. That's enough frontage for one lot. It should be one house lot, or changes should be made to, to expand access on Taunton Avenue. So for those reasons, we respectfully submit that this is not an A and R approval. We were, uh, an A and R plan, we were surprised a couple of years ago when the board endorsed a plan that was very similar to this. And so we, we request that the board deny this now, uh, for the reasons, uh, that I've stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costa.
And I would actually ask, too, if the board has had input that this meets frontage requirements, that the board publicly disclose where that input, uh, comes from, respectfully, if the board's willing to do that.
Understood.
Thank you.
So I'll, um, I'll pull up this for everybody can see it on the screen. This is, uh, apparently I am sharing there. So again, Norton bylaws, the distance, frontage is the distance measured along the street line of a lot between the intersections with the sidelines, or between the intersection of street line or street lines extended, either the lot, sidelines, intersections. On the case of cul-de-sac, we don't need to worry about cul-de-sac, because we're not talking about that. But that is the, from Article Two, definitions of frontage. So the Norton zoning bylaw does not necessarily make a mention of access, but again, the applicant, the, uh, abutter's attorney speaking to state requirements as to frontage, not necessarily Norton town bylaws.
That's what left me confused.
I do see, sir, were you...
Yes, my name is Elliot Gray, I'm an attorney in North Carolina, Massachusetts, I also assist Mr. White, acting tonight with my fellow professionals here.
So you're representing the applicant just to confirm?
Yes, yes, sir. Very briefly, uh, I'm not prepared to comment on the five-page letter that I respectfully got seven minutes ago. But I did want to make a couple of comments. This A and R plan was approved approximately three years ago by this board. I've had a couple of recent cases, that I've done a fair amount of research on A and R plans, and the A and R plan, interestingly, this board cannot rescind it. In the Cassini case, I think you're aware of that. Secondly, when this was approved, anyone that was there that evening or had actual notice had twenty-one days under the statute to appeal, that was not done. Anyone that was not there that evening and did not have notice had sixty days under judicial surety to appeal to the Supreme Court for review, that was not done. So in fairness to my client, after spending years and money and time and effort, he's come forward and, and this is like maybe a Hail Mary type pass at the end of the game. But I would like the opportunity to research, as there's, appears to be many, many cases here, and I'd like to take a look at that, but...
I would, you are certainly welcome to do research. I would say that the A and R plan is one thing, the A and R is not determination of zoning or whether it meets the requirements for building.
No question about it, and I completely agree with you.
And I would also say that what Mr. Costa has submitted and has shared is not significantly different than the, than the abutters' objections when this was before the board's multiple years ago previously.
Right.
So if this is new information for the applicant, then they have a short memory.
I wasn't here then, I'm just saying, they didn't appeal.
I understand. I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about the A and R, I'm talking about the other application for this that was withdrawn.
Yep.
So, okay. Okay. So that is obviously an issue which would speak to the viability of the special permit as a whole. Do we have additional questions for the applicant at this time related to that issue?
Maybe if you get the town council's opinion on those. That's the only way I'm going to be comfortable with these answers, not going to be coming from the applicant or from the court.
Okay. So we would need to, I believe, to get the town council's opinion from the board, we would need to take a vote therefore. Is that something we would like to do an official vote for, and then I will...
It's insane that we have to do that, I guess.
Understood?
So moved for the motion to get town council's approval.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for official opinion from town council.
Is this a simple majority?
Yes, this is a simple majority. Eric, I'll start with you.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes, please.
Alan?
abstaining protest.
Wayne, do you have a vote on getting the opinion from town council on this?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Brian, if we work on the form, I would just say that I know that this issue was brought to town council when this application was before us previously. I do not believe we ever had a, a official filing on file as it related to it. I would have to check probably three file systems ago. it. I would have to check probably three file systems ago. Okay. Do we have any additional questions for the applicant at this time? Otherwise, we may have additional members of the public who may wish to make a comment. I know I saw one hand raised previously virtually, but it appears to have gone away.
And it's back.
It's back. Okay. The name that I see in the Zoom meeting is I M Smythe at Comcast. So I'd ask you just to please unmute your microphone and introduce yourself with your name and address, please. And...
Hi, my name is, hello?
Yeah.
Hi. My name is Charlene Smith, and I'm resident of Norton. My family owns the property at Meadowbrook Pond. I just wanted to convey two thoughts regarding this project, and they're just thoughts that I've had that I've been mulling over for some time. First, this plan has four residential homes on a 48-acre piece of land. With that in mind, the visual impact will be nominal at best. There are massive and ugly apartment complexes in town on much, much smaller areas, hence compromising the small-town character of Norton. This project aligns with Norton's charming town feel and will preserve the natural beauty of the majority of this land. I've lived in Norton for over 30 years, and my objective is to keep Norton beautiful. Secondly, and of equal importance, is safety. For decades, I have requests that trespassers leave the property. Most days, I am knocking on tinted windows of gosh knows who, yes, drug dealers, and asking them to leave. Parents are dropping their kids off to hang out. Dog walkers are walking their dogs and leaving dog feces behind. Hunters are trespassing with guns. I really can't do this any longer. I'm sure the Norton police have grown wary of my calls to track down illegal dumpers. Out-of-towners have dumped everything from boats to mattresses to hot tubs. The environmental place in Norton Place are amazing, but burdening them with the bozos dumping boats is just poor use of taxpayer funds. That's about it. I really thank you all for your time, but I just wanted to say my piece. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. I just ask if you can lower your virtual hand in the Zoom meeting. Otherwise, I'm going to keep thinking you have additional comments. Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else here in person who'd like to make additional questions or comments to the board? Okay. And any additional questions or comments from the board for the applicant or anyone else? Obviously, as it relates to the frontage question, that is kind of a yes or a no answer. Whether it needs frontage, if the answer is yes, then we can vote to approve. If it is no, then I assume the applicant would have additional things that they would wish to do.
Couldn't we just make the vote contingent on what the town attorney says? Or is that something we would rather see for...
Mr. Chairman, we could. I was going to say that we would, I would recommend we ask the applicant if they would be, if they would prefer us to continue until after we get an official opinion from town council, or whether they would prefer that.
Like, if the answer is no, that the frontage doesn't exist, would they, would the other option, again, be to make it a subdivision if so desired?
That would be up to the applicant to decide. So, sir, would you prefer that we...
I think it would make sense in light of the fact that the board has voted to have town council input, which I think is a great idea, that we continue it for a month. I think that's more than enough time for town council to address that pointed issue, and it might give us an opportunity to work on our end too.
Okay.
I'd like to honestly take a look at these cases.
Okay.
Make a motion to continue.
And that would be to...
December 19th.
December 19th? Okay.
Is that heavy?
Well, the 12th is the appeal.
19 for this. We do not want to put you after the facility project.
Appreciate it.
Make a motion to continue special permit 20475 to December 19th. Should I give it?
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on the motion to continue? Eric?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Lewis.
And I will vote yes. So we are continued. I would just say to members of the board that we should be prepared, after we get an opinion, to move forward with closing this and rendering a decision at our next meeting. I know when we looked at this project before, it was continued multiple times, and I believe Mr. Costa showed up virtually or a member of his staff to a number of those meetings. So we want to make sure that we move this along quickly through the process.
Okay. To confirm, that'd be 7:15?
That is when all of our meetings start, yes. Otherwise, I'm going to get really confused. Okay. Moving right along.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Next item on our agenda is definitive subdivision 20946 and special permit 20951 for 0 Dean Street. Why those numbers are consecutive, I have no idea. Are not consecutive, I have no idea. This is a, again, this is an application to consider four subdivided lots, each with a duplex, and two ways to connect the duplexes to Dean Street. This is continued from our October 17th meeting. So let's, you go ahead and present, and just make sure that as we're saying the easel, do we feel like we can see that through the, see everything through the camera? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Hoven. I am here representing Strong Point Engineering and the owner and applicant Catherine McEnroe. So we have made a few changes based on our last meeting. So one of the things that was brought up was adding the conservation restriction to the lots. What we've actually discussed with John Thomas and conservation is that rather than using conservation restriction, that they be termed and needed as open space preservation areas. And that starts at the 25-foot wetland buffer and goes to the rest of the, the rest of the lot, of the wetlands that's shown with the red line.
So essentially, north of the pink highlighter, is it?
Yes. Yep. North of that. And the reason that is, conservation restrictions actually have a lot of maintenance with them, and they have to go through the state. It takes a long time. And it, it puts a lot of onus on the, the owners. And just leaving it as an open space preservation area would leave it untouchable and enforceable.
So that, just to confirm, that land would still be part of those lots?
It would still be part of those lots. But it would be open space preserved, and it's enforceable, just like a conservation restriction would be. No doing anything within the land, within there. So for the, talking about the visual buffering and privacy between the new lots and the proposed, the existing lots, what we've added on is notation that if any of the construction work goes closer than 10 feet of the existing property lines or the easement line where the water is going to run, the owner will be required to either add a six-foot, six-foot panel fence of either stockade or vinyl, or a evergreen screen. As it is right now, we're not proposing, aside from right at the roadway, we're not proposing anything along the abutting property lines, except for the water line, and then that would be 10 feet from the water line easement into the lots. And the only other revision that we made was just, we added some information to the erosion control sheets based on comments from Pat Brennan on the Conservation Commission review letter. And we did actually, last night, we had our Conservation Commission meeting, and they have actually, they just have to sign the order of conditions at the next meeting. They basically guarantee that once it's written, it will be passed at the next meeting. So if anyone has any questions or comments, I can try and answer.
And just to, I think this is probably self-explanatory, but you have no issue if we were to include some of those notations that you have in the top of the map there in terms of the open space area and the fencing or evergreen screen being included as conditions in whatever we...
No problem with that.
Since you proposed it, I didn't think you would, but just to confirm that. Okay. I mean, what we're showing is one of the, the two, I'm going to call them roadways, and then the other one is largely the same, except a little bit further up, correct?
Yes.
Further east?
Yes.
My compass directions are turned around. Okay. Okay. So do we have additional questions for the applicant at this time? And there's the other one. Thank you. Similar, again, with the lines relating to the open space. Yeah. So do we have additional questions for the applicant? Any potential additional conditions that we wanted to discuss? I know we talked about that water wanted to run that connecting pipe between the two, so that's why there's an easement going along the backs of those properties. And we had some discussion about a path back there, but I think the general, this general feeling that I got from the abutters was that that wasn't something that they really wanted.
Right.
Even though it's going to be cleared.
It's going to be a dirt path in the woods, so my recommendation was basically that it's just maintained instead of being like a...
Overgrown.
...overgrown path. And maybe that requirement of making it a path would add in a fence that they wouldn't have had otherwise.
But if they're...
But if the neighbors don't want it.
The easement, is the easement within the 10-foot area?
Yes, so the easement is 10 feet off of the property line, and the water line would be centered within the 10-foot easement.
So that would trigger that condition that you discussed, that there'd be a fence in Evergreen Street?
Yes, so, well, they have, so for that portion where the water line is, it would be 10 feet off of that easement. So we have to clear within the easement to put the water line in, because that's where the water department wants it. So if we move 10 feet from the edge of that easement where we're not clearing...
Okay, then you would not necessarily...
Yes, and that's actually the wording that's on the plan, reads that way.
Okay.
I may not have said it correctly.
That fence will only be while they're constructing it, not afterwards, right?
Correct.
My proposal is that if there's going to be a path, maybe they have a fence there permanently?
So I guess, I guess just to clarify the other, the other comment, when you're proposing a fence via stockade, vinyl, or evergreen screen, that's intended to be temporary structure?
So the fence is only if during construction, they clear closer to 10 feet than the property lines, or closer to 10 feet from the easement line. So basically 20 feet, between 10 and 20 feet off of the property line.
Right.
On the interior of Butter's lots because of the water. So...
But the intention is that any of those screening or fencing would be, remain permanent, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was...
Yes, to remain permanent.
That's what I was confirming. Okay. Additional comments or questions from the board? Otherwise, I would go to members of the public. I see we have done one person in the Zoom meeting who did want to ask a question. I'm not seeing anybody jumping, so I'll go to that person. If there's additional people here in person who'd like to make an additional comment, I'd ask you to just make yourself known. Starting with the person virtually, the name that I see in the Zoom meeting is Arfany. So I just asked if you could please introduce yourself with your name and address, please, and we'd love to hear your comments.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. My name is Rebecca Feeny. I'm at 101 Dean Street. I mentioned at the last meeting that I felt that this project sounds intrusive, and I've mentioned that I've had concerns about privacy and safety and the wildlife in the area. I cannot emphasize enough that the trees in this area should be preserved. Maintaining a 10-foot area of grass is not enough between my property and the development. I heard that a fence was proposed if, if then scenario, but I'm insisting on a six-foot-high stockade, permanent, pressure-treated, privacy fence, preferably made of fir, to be installed extending along the water utility easement. The posts of the fence should not be visible from my side of the fence, and this fence should be maintained by the applicant or replaced by the applicant as needed. A lot of concerns were raised about the water table being impacted. I am concerned as well. My question is, who conducted the water table testing? An independent contractor not associated with the project should be asked to conduct additional testing. The testing that was done seems to be lacking accuracy. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Feeny. I do recall that during the last meeting, that the process of the water table and all of those wells was discussed, in that all of the test pits were witnessed by the cultivation agent and different controls to that respect. But I do understand the skepticism that has been expressed by yourself and other abutters as it relates to the water tape, the water that you generally see in the area. And as it relates to the fence, you were just, you would ask just for a fence along the easement area, correct? That is what you were, you were requesting, correct?
Yes, along the, extending along the water utility easement, but something that is permanent, not something that is put up just during construction. It should, it should remain there.
Yes. Understood. I think we understand your comments, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional members of the public, either in person or remotely, who'd like to make any comments as it relates to this project? Okay. Yes, please, if you want to...
This is Pat Clark, West Hodges Street, 6 West Hodges Street. I just really wanted to agree with what Rebecca was saying. The idea of a screen going up is not appealing at all. So, and I agree that there should be something permanent, so we don't have to look at it. We have to deal with the water. We have to look at that thing too. I'd rather have the fence that blocks. I don't want to see the duplexes. I can see. And also, we still have that traffic issue with those two driveways coming out of that. And also, we still have that traffic issue with those two driveways coming out of that street and the blind spots that I believe Dave talked about at the last meeting. That's still an issue.
There was the question of the sightlines. The applicant did go through, this has gone through a peer review process in terms of the engineering, so the engineer said that the sightlines meet the requirements. So-
That's what they said. They're not the ones that are living here, right?
Yeah. I always ask that any sightlines be adjusted for the speeds people actually take on the roads, which in some cases are very different than the posted speed limits.
And additionally, our client did approach the police department to get any reports of accidents. They are in the midst of going through the last four years of records, but when he asked, they didn't recall anything.
Well, those who suspect there's nothing else around that area that's anything like that, so I don't know what they would be comparing it to.
Understood. Thank you.
Just one good question. I'm sitting right here in 115 Dean Street. So the engineer that did that testing, did they work for the town or was it-
For the, for the water levels and things like that?
I don't know, the one that the road did. I'm just curious.
So, peer reviewers, so in general, peer reviews are, an applicant will provide funding to the town and the town hires an engineer from that funding. So the town does not spend its own money on it, but the town is in charge of the projects. So we hire the engineers and this one, Pat Brennan, is, has appeared before this board multiple times and he is not an easy creator.
I'm just curious. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Clark, 6 West Hodges Street. I have to agree totally with what Mrs. Feeny said about protecting this, this area if this project gets approved, particularly in regard to the vernal pool and the wetlands that are out in the back of this, of this project. That type of fence that she just, that she talked about, that's the type of fence that should be put in, in the back of this project to protect that area out there. There shouldn't be any walking trails out there. That's a, that's a sensitive area out there.
The applicant has proposed that anything, I'm not sure if you can see the, the color there on the map, there's a line. Anything above that is, the applicant is proposing be specified as an open space preservation area-
Okay.
Which would be enforced as, can't do anything there.
Okay, but I mean, would it be fencing?
So it wouldn't necessarily, there wouldn't necessarily be a fence there-
Okay.
Because you'd be putting a fence through the area that you're saying is more environmentally sensitive, which kind of defeats the purpose of that for wildlife traveling through it, but it would be an area that you wouldn't be able, that would be enforceable as you can't be back here doing, putting your shed or putting construction or-
Yeah.
Doing anything back there.
Okay.
So it's not necessarily delineated physically, physical barrier, but it's carried forward in a, like a deed restriction.
And there will be markers along, at least at the property boundaries where it meets the, the open space preservation line delineating. And additionally, if in the future, any of the lot owners want to try and go closer than 100 feet to the wetlands, then they would have to go to conservation for anything that would take any more trees out than what we currently show.
Does that speak to your point?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You couldn't even dump leaves out there.
Okay.
If I could ask, the open space preservation, is that actually basically untouchable or does that allow for the uses in our open spaces table?
Sure.
So like agriculture?
Can you speak to this?
I, I believe it's basically untouchable because you're within 25 feet of the wetlands.
Aside from the fact, that might be like a double check on, on doing something, but if hypothetically, if the wetlands wasn't there, as an open space preservation, does that still allow the uses from our open space table, like, like a public park or a farm?
If the wetlands weren't there, we probably wouldn't be giving it up to open space.
Yes. If, to, to the point that the applicant is recommending that it be set aside with an open space preservation restriction, I won't speak for you, but I don't think that you would object to a specific condition specifying the, a higher level of can't do anything here-ness-
Yes.
For lack of a-
That was the intent.
Yeah. So whether or not we're going above and beyond what the open space preservation regulation would intend, the applicant is fine with us doing that.
In theory, if one of the residents owned a horse, could they bring their horse out there? Like, that's the-
I do not know. That would be something where I think that maybe we would want to, if we were to approve and issue a specific condition, then we could look at any wording that we wanted to include to prohibit whatever we wanted to prohibit.
Just trying to clarify, that's all.
I realize that my statement clarified nothing.
It's okay.
So do we have any additional questions, comments for the applicant at this time?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please?
Yep, all right. Now, I was having a little difficulty trying to get signed in on the thing here. My name's Dave Colson, live at 110 Dean Street. I apologize for not being there in person, but I've had eye surgery and having a hard time navigating through all this stuff on my screen. Couple of things I got concerns on, and one of them is regards to the slope of the road on the first one, right across the street from me. I think it's Catherine's Way, it was, it was about nine-degree pitch or something like that. I'm not exactly sure, really stand with as far as line of sight, as far as safety with the amount of traffic that runs on this road, and what happens when the, the abutting neighbors to these properties where these roadways are going to be going in, decide to plant bushes and shrubs and trees to block themselves from having to view this development. That's going to create another safety concern where there's going to be a light of sight that's going to be impacted, and we're going to have issues with that. In addition, a lot of this stuff being a, you know, normally this wouldn't have been approved in an IRA zone. And with all the special permits and exemptions that they're looking for, normally this wouldn't have been allowed. And there's great concern over the water table, as we've talked about before at the last meeting, and again here now. And it just, it befuddles me to figure out how this can even be in the running to actually even get approved. Is this because of the safety concerns and we haven't even got into all the wildlife that's up in the back there?
Okay.
And the other thing I want to ask is, who's going to be responsible for maintaining the road? So I know it's a private road that they were talking about, so the homeowners association or whatever they're going to have there is going to be required to take care of that road. But who's going to be required to take care of it when the owners of the properties decide that they don't want to do this? And who's going to be cleaning out the catch basins or filtration system that's underneath there that's going to be, being discharged towards the wetlands? I mean, this, this, this project has never been allowed in the past, and it's only now through manipulation and trying to get exemptions that it, it shouldn't be built.
In terms of your question-
Part of them rambling.
No, I understand. In terms of your question about the homeowners association, the property owners are responsible for funding the homeowners association and meeting the conditions that we set for them, whether that's meeting the stormwater or emptying catch basins, et cetera. If they do not do that, then the town has enforcement mechanisms to help encourage that.
Yeah.
That's no different than any other, that's no different than any other homeowners association and any other town in the country, for better or for worse.
So what, what about the safety concerns with the, with the visibility of these cars that are going to be coming in, in and out of these supposed private roads?
Sure.
How are they going to make, and when they're pushing the snow with the salt and everything else in the winter, you know, where do they plan on just, you know, pushing it to, right towards the end of the cul-de-sac, going right towards the, you know, the vernal pool area and the wetlands itself? I mean, I wish I had time to be there last night with conservation, but suffering with my eye here, I'm not able to get around as well. Another week would be different, but-
Understood, sir. And I can ask your question about the snow removal and restate the sightlines with the applicant, so I'll do that presently. If there's anything else that, unless there's anything else that you'd like to add?
No, it was just on the, who's responsible for the road and no one's going to step up and take care of it. And, oh, one other thing, yeah. What, so, have they defined what they're, what they're actually going to build there yet? Because plans are looking for an exemption in order to put duplexes in our IRA zone, which none of the neighbors have decided, you know, they don't want this, which is going to detract from our property values as well. The, is it going to be duplexes that they're building? Because at the last meeting, they also talked about how whichever the homeowner, whatever type home the homeowner wants to build. A duplex is a duplex. This is either going to be a duplex development or it's going to be a single-family home development, which is-
The proposal is for duplexes at this time.
Okay, because the engineer that was there talking last time said that the, it was going to be up to the, the homeowners as to what choice, you know, what type of home that they would want to build. So unless they're just keeping it vague in general that there's multiple types of duplexes to pick from, or, or is this just something just to get on the books so they can throw whatever they want in later down the road?
I believe the implication is just that there are different designs of duplexes and a specific one has not been defined yet, but I, I will also add that of things that I will ask the applicant, applicant to confirm.
Okay. Now, then I'm going to, I'm just going to say in closing that, you know, residents here on Dean Street are not in agreement with this project whatsoever. We do not need to see this, and there's a huge safety concern with the roadways entering into Dean Street with the increased flow of traffic that we have here and with the amount of wetlands that is back there. This property and this project is definitely going to impact adversely this whole area. And thank you for my time.
Thank you, sir. So I, I would say I won't hold your colleague's words in the last session, but just the three questions that I had was just, if you're able just to, from a visual perspective, walk through the sightlines on the site as it relates to the street, specific, if there are specific locations marked for snow removal on the site, and then if there are, just to, as a confirmation that duplexes are being proposed and it's just the designs that are not finalized.
Sure, I can start with the sightlines. So yes, Catherine's Way, I believe, is eight and a half to nine percent, but we meet all of the town regulations. We have a one and a half percent landing leveling strip of, I think, that's 50 feet back from the roadway so that you wouldn't be coming down to Dean Street at a sharp angle. And we, you know, we measured the site distance from four feet up where you would see sitting in your car, and we had over 1,000 feet in each direction, I believe. The distances are shown on the plans. And that really takes into account all of the existing trees and shrubs that are currently out there. Snow storage, yes, it, it, the plan is right now to push everything towards the back. We are more than 100 feet away from the wetlands, so we are perfectly, we are entitled to push the snow there and any, basically, that, that is far enough away that any water would be cleaned before it would, considered clean before it would get back to the wetlands. And I believe what my colleague was saying was that as of right now, yes, we are proposing duplexes. I think the goal is to build the roads and sell the lots, and if, say, the person that buys Lot 1 doesn't want to, wants to live on Lot 1 by himself, then he could possibly build his own single-family house, but, or he could do a duplex. It's just the option is out there. But yes, as of right now, we are proposing duplex on each lot.
Thank you. And the, the snow removal question wasn't necessarily to put you on the spot, just in terms of some plans, we, they're marked snow removal areas, put it, we're going to put it right here, some plans there are not, so just to, okay?
And obviously, if it, we have like a horrible winter where there's, you know, 20 feet of snow again-
2015, yeah.
Yeah, then they would be responsible for removing snow from the site.
Yeah, right. Sorry.
Thank you, sir. I'll just give a general comment that if we are, if anybody has joined the meeting and you're not looking to speak, that I ask that you please just go on mute to limit any potential background noise. Are there any additional comments from numbers of the public joining us virtually? I think everybody who's here joining us in person has spoken, who I don't already recognize.
I've got one more comment, if I could. Dave Colson, 110 Dean Street.
Sure, sir. Yes, we can.
Okay. All right, great. So it just, my point taken, it, it, it's, it could be duplexes or it could be a single-family home. And then if it was going to be single-family homes and putting a road in, I think they should be required to meet all the conditions of putting an actual road in with curving, sidewalks, the whole nine yards. This is a, it's just, it's, it's like tossing it in the air, whatever, whatever the heck's going to come down the road, whatever we can get in there. Not right. Sorry. Thank you for your time again.
Thank you for your comments, sir. So again, I'll turn to the board in terms of, yes, Laura?
Can somebody remind me? I made a confusing list with that I watched. There are no sidewalks currently on Dean?
There are no sidewalks on Dean right now, no.
Okay, good. Got it. Thank you.
We have additional questions for the applicant at this time? And while we're thinking of those, I'll just, I know you mentioned you were a conservation and they said they just needed to finalize an order of conditions potentially for you.
Yes.
Are there any other actions from other town boards or bodies that you are waiting for at this time?
No.
Okay. So again, this is a-
Just, let me ask another question.
Yes, please.
If it's going to be an either or, thank you, whether it's duplex or single-family home, shouldn't that be in their application and not just duplexes?
They are submitting for a duplex. They would, that would be considered a more intensive use than a single-family house. So by submitting the, we are looking at this from a quote-unquote worst-case scenario already. Not necessarily the best choice of words, but if they were to go from a duplex to a single-family, that would be considered less impact. So looking at it now, this is probably the, the most impact that we would be, potentially see on the site, and that's what we're reviewing.
Those, single families are allowed by law, so if they decided not to do this project but own the property, a single-family home-
It could be used. It could be huge.
But there's not a limit to the size of a house on anybody's property other than the setbacks.
And you have no requirement to put up a fence?
So, um, if we have additional comments or questions for the applicant, I'd ask that we do so. Otherwise, I'd ask that we consider a motion to close the public hearing if you're amenable to that.
So move.
Just confirm that as a motion to close the public.
To close the public hearing.
Okay. So we have a motion to close the public hearing for DEF 20946 and SP 20951. Any further discussion of the motion to close the public hearing? Okay, we'll go through the roll. Eric?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So the public hearing is now closed, so we'll not be taking additional comments or questions from the applicant or any other parties. Does the board wish to move forward with a decision and a vote at this time, or would prefer to continue that point of the discussion to a future session?
Move that we vote for the definitive plan 20946 and special permit 20951.
Okay. I think we would take those as separate motions. But your, your point is noted and your intention is noted. If you wanna pick one of those and start, you can.
Have we added conditions to this already, or just what's?
I was just making a motion to vote.
Uh, we would be, yeah, we would, when we, when we do a vote, we would need to add conditions as discussed, yes. So if anybody is not comfortable voting at this time, I ask that you please make an emotion to continue the discussion in a future session. Okay. So Jim, would you like to pick one to start with?
Sure. Vote on the definitive 20946. The definitive sight plan.
Okay. And this is a motion to?
Approve.
Okay, thank you. I always like it that motions are in the affirmative. And this is to approve with conditions?
Standard conditions.
And we're doing the standard conditions, and then in addition, are we including?
With what conservation?
With the, open space preservation?
Open space preservation, yes.
And the additional condition for fencing, if there's any disturbance in the?
Yes.
The area specified?
Yes, on the waterway, easement.
Yeah, I, I would add the condition for the easement should be for permanent fencing, not just temporary fencing?
That's what's on the plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
There was never, uh, I think that's what I tried to clarify earlier, is that there's not, they're not proposing temporary fencing. They're doing construction in that area, they're putting up fencing. For the easement, for the utility easement, they're not intending to put fencing there.
Well, that's what, that's what I mean. For the utility easement, the residents have requested that fencing go in there. Uh, and additionally, they've mentioned they don't really wanna see the houses there. Can we mandate fencing along sightlines?
You'd have to have them added to the plan.
I mean, that's, we can, we can request that as a condition, whether the applicant would feel it's overly burdensome is a question.
Wouldn't that have a greater impact going across the property line?
And they would have the, potentially, and that's also something that the applicant would be, if they felt that it was reasonable, they would potentially appeal. So that's, that's our discretion. We can ask them for it if we feel, uh, it's justified.
I guess as, you know, arguing against myself, if any of those houses are taller than six feet, those windows are gonna see over the fence anyways.
Most likely, yes. That's not, that's not any question. It's just a privacy fence is privacy fence. So, um, so we have, the conditions that we've been discussed, that have been discussed are the open space preservation area and the fencing or and/or evergreen screening, in the event that clearing.
They were, can we just say fencing and not the over, the?
You're, you're looking for fencing.
What the resident, the butters have said, they don't want the screening, they want a permanent fence, so.
Screening is meant by the fence and the bushes. It's not an actual screen.
Okay, so there's a, the question would, the difference would be a fence made of stockade or vinyl or ever, there is.
So the evergreen, okay.
It would be evergreen screen.
I thought you were talking about just the green again.
No, that was, the proposal was potential evergreen screen as an option. We can choose to not include that in our conditions if we do not feel it's an appropriate choice. So just to clarify, what is the, the condition that we are looking to include in the motion?
Just as they stated with the fencing, they put it in there, right? It was in the plan.
So, so what the applicant has stated for the fencing, not necessarily what the butters have additionally requested on top of that?
I, I feel like just, I wanna honor the residents a little bit with like their request for a fence that blocks the trail. They don't wanna see it. I don't know whether anybody's gonna be using it. I, I guess it's gonna be private property without an easement, so it shouldn't get used by anybody other than the residents. Or for families.
Wasn't the comment they didn't, they wanted screening or fencing between their house and?
And the trail, yeah.
And the easement, which is essentially the trail, so the, the area between the two.
I could be wrong. Did they say block between their house and the development and the structure? I thought it was, I'm not sure which resident that was.
It was for me, and I think what she said was pressure-treated post that wouldn't face her property line with fur stockade fences.
You could condition that if you had that address, I suppose. I've seen that apply.
I think the, I think the intention is that fencing along the entire easement area, basically, is the.
Yes.
And then.
Sort of of the opinion, it should be consistent, just because one resident likes stockade fur and the next one wants vinyl.
Yeah, we have to just.
It's definitely be consistent.
There's no way you're gonna mix and match it.
No.
So we can.
But that's not covering this note on the plan, am I interpreting that note wrong?
The note referring to the plan is if there's clearing of vegetation within 10 feet of the existing lines. So if they don't clear close to the property line, then they don't, then they basically leave the existing vegetation in place. And they don't add any additional fencing or screening. That's what's proposed. So if they.
It just seems to me not, if we're gonna start adding.
If they clear within 20 feet of the property line, essentially, then they would be adding a fence to replace the screening that has been removed. That's the, the intention of what they've put on plan.
So I don't think without having a fence on this plan, I don't think that's enforceable. Even if it's conditioned, I don't know. It just doesn't seem like it should apply. It seems like that should have been on the present law.
I'm not arguing against myself again and say, you know, like, a fence isn't gonna block anything except for you guys' view, sorry to speak directly, but your view of the forest. The houses aren't in the middle. If we put a fence along the easement, I, I was thinking of more of a short thing, like on the rail trail or something, but a full, you're just gonna be blocking your own view from the forest. I understand not wanting to look at the houses, but there's no houses in the easement area.
That's.
We've already closed the public.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's sort of a.
Yeah, no, I, it's good to think out loud sometimes. So the, um, so they're, they're not going anywhere near the 25-foot buffer in the wetlands. And that's all conservation anyway.
Yep.
So the proposal from the applicant as it relates to fencing and screening is that if the, are clearing vegetation within 10 feet of the existing boundary lines or the, or 10 feet of the easement, so they're carved out separately. So if, if we look at non-easements, if they go within 20 feet of the property line, they're going to add additional screening or fencing. If they don't go within 20 feet of the property line, then they're proposing to do, to leave the existing vegetation as it is.
Yes. Yes.
For the easement area, the proposal is if they do any work within 10 feet of the easement. And the easement is 10 feet, so it's 20 feet from the property line in that area, not 10 feet. So again, same thing, if they don't do anything, then they leave it alone. If they do do work within 20 feet of the easement, then they would put in whatever is there. That is what has been proposed by the applicant. All of which is permanent, none of which is temporary.
So.
So we are, the dis, so. If we are looking to require additional privacy fencing along?
No.
The residential property lines, then?
Just as it said on the sight plan.
Okay. So that's, that is your motion?
That's my motion.
With the open space preservation and the fencing as discussed?
Yes.
Okay. And the motion is to be affirmative? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. I hesitate to ask this question. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Okay. So again, this is the motion for definitive with conditions. And Eric, I will start with you once again.
No.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
No.
And I will vote yes. So that is, I believe, five to two? Okay. And the next decision would be SP 20951. So we'd look for a second motion for that.
Make a motion to approve SP 20951.
And with the same conditions, with standard special permit conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the motion, Jim, and the second, Steve. Is there any further discussion? Again, we're duplicating conditions, but that's nothing the board hasn't done for decades. Okay. Eric?
No.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
No.
And I will vote yes again. That's five to two?
Do we vote on the individual waivers, or is it because they're on the plan? If we've approved the plan, then the waivers are free?
Do you wanna specify the waivers, just to, so we all have them clear in our mind?
Sure, you wanna read them, you mean?
Yes, please.
Got it. Phone waivers or from certain sections of subdivision rules regulations, this has to do with the definitive subdivision. Section 4.2H relief requested is that the requirement that all trees with a diameter greater than 10 inches be shown on the plans. Section 5.3, relief requested is the requirement that for 24-foot pavement width, sloped, the sloped granite curb and a sidewalk for a minor street. Section 5.3B, relief requested for the requirement of proposed roadway meeting the existing roadway at right angles. 5.4D, relief requested for the requirement that dead-end streets may be constructed upon the granting of a waiver. 5.17, relief requested for the requirement to provide streetlights. Section 5.18, relief requested for the requirement to provide shade trees. And Article 10, relief requested for the requirement to provide a development impact statement.
Okay. I think that a lot of those do speak to the subdivision that we already spoke to. If there's any of those that stand out to anybody and they want to revisit anything, please let me know. Okay. So I think that concludes our discussion on this agenda item, so let's move on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you much, everybody, for your discussion and your comments. So the next item on our agenda is SP 21014 for 61 Miss Main Street. This applicant has requested to withdraw without prejudice, so we can accept that withdrawal. And we would need a motion.
So move.
Definitive.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice? Okay. Eric?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will, Wayne?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. Next item on our agenda is sight plan review 20881. That is 237 East Main Street with the owner is Leonard Street B1 Owner LLC with Condyne Capital Partners. And the applicant is looking to construct a 32,420-square-foot warehouse slash industrial space. So I asked the applicant to come forward here. Apologize that you've been waiting here for us, but.
Kind of thinned out here.
It's a long agenda today.
It's okay. Anytime. All right, thanks for having us tonight. My name's Don O'Neill, and I'm from Condyne. And with us, we have Brandon Carr from Depre, Deprent Civil Engineering. We did all the civil engineering. We're here to present 237 East Main Street, which we refer to as Lot One, which is located on 123 in the corner of Leonard Street, which actually is Phase One of the Blue Star Project, and it's the last lot in Phase One. And as we can see, this is the lot up front. Originally, this lot was slated for retail prior to COVID. COVID set in, we had some interest, and it just petered out over the years, and there was no interest on the retail end of it. So the best use for us is to consolidate that lot, which we did to Lot One, and build, we are seeking approval for a 32,420-square-foot warehouse that will have similar looks to the existing warehouses on Leonard Street, Number 15 and Number 19 and others. This is Number 15, and this is Number 19. And again, as stated, it's originally two lots, and now it is one lot to develop. Do we have the renderings that we could show?
We are showing them up on, are you showing them up?
I'm actually, I'm in the Zoom hearing.
So you're the one driving, okay.
But I don't think that's me. I think that's Brad.
Am I, no, that's probably Jeff. Jeff's on.
Oh, Jeff, I'm not sure. It's probably me, because it now looks like mine. I think it's just probably seconds behind. It's probably awful.
Understood.
Okay, that's the front of the, the building. And the front of the building has glass with the entry on, on the front. On the right side is parallel in 123. Do you have the other elevation, so you just wanna use that?
They just give it down, and then I have just the architectural.
This is the footprint. This is, this is the other elevations, the top one, looking at 123. The next one on the left is loading docks to the rear. And the next one on the right in the middle is the front face of where the parking lot is. And the bottom elevation is facing Building Four, Building 15, I should say, that isn't seen from the highway whatsoever, or from the front, the front of the building. At this, all utilities and gas and sewer and electric had been stubbed right in the general area from our Phase One approvals. The warehouse would generate less. landscape when Brandon jumps in. We met with conservation last night, everything, uh, went well. We had a conservation site visit, which went well. Uh, we didn't close last night, uh, pending the approval or review, in case we had to change something here. If we closed last night and something came up, we'd have to start all over, so just trying to give everybody an update. Um, it's, uh, kind of ironic, this, this front lot is where we started in Blue Star, this is where eight to 10 to 12 buildings were, were demoed between the asbestos, the cow barns, uh, the old barns, this is where the whole cleanup started with all the tires, and the site's been vacant, um, there, there's only two trees on the site, it's, uh, previously disturbed, and we're ready to put the finishing touches on the front entry of, um, Blue Star Phase 1. Want to jump in there, Brandon?
Um, Brandon Carr with the pre-digitalizing, so I'll just kind of walk you through the plan in a little more detail. Uh, so, as Don said, uh, outlined in blue here, uh, so you can see to the south is the Canoe River, um, there are, so there's a riverbank associated with that, a 200-foot riverbank, and there's wetlands, uh, surrounding that, um, and that's why we're in Concom jurisdictions. We do, we did have existing conservation permits for what was previous Lot 1 and 2, we closed those out, combined them, opened them on their new file, that's why we're before Concom, but we're actually outside of their jurisdiction with our proposed work, other than some, um, restoration to area that was previously disturbed. So we're further away from the wetlands, um, with our limited disturbance, and with our buildings and parking that we were under the previous plan, but, so here's the existing site, you can see it's, as Don said, entirely cleared, there's, uh, two trees on the site, um, but it's, the majority of it's just field and then this kind of dirt gravel paths, and there's a, uh, loom stockpile from some of the other Phase 1 work that we'd be utilizing for this. Um, there is this existing, uh, right turn-in off of 123, and, and when I get to the site land, because here it really doesn't, um, work anymore with what we're proposing, so we would be going to DOT to remove that. That's got Jersey barriers up, it's never been used today, uh, but we would basically remove that, connect the sidewalks through, um, and kind of just keep that curb edge going, but that would have to be permitted through DOT. Um, so going to the site plan next, as Don mentioned, we're proposing a, um, industrial warehouse building, it's, uh, a little over 32,000 square feet, 32,420 square feet, you can see it's kind of long and narrow to fit the, um, site setbacks. Um, before I kind of get to the details on the site plan, we're not asking for any relief from any setbacks, coverage, parking, it meets all the requirements. Um, so, we're proposing the building in the center of the lot, so 123 is on your left here, uh, parking up towards Leonard Street, kind of setback off of Leonard Street, we do have a pretty shallow, um, infiltration basin there, but when we get to the landscaping, you'll see we have a lot of landscaping up around that corner, and then the truck loading is in the, on the south end of the site there, kind of facing 495. The, um, required is, there's 40 for the size building, uh, 41 parking spaces are required, we're proposing 45. We are proposing, um, three EV chargers at this time, um, kind of the same, similar ratio that we've been doing in all the, the buildings. Initially, it's anywhere from three to five per building, and we put in additional conduit, kind of make other spaces EV-ready, so as they would come online, we would have the ability to kind of just drop in the chargers and not necessarily have to rip up, you know, we just have to run the wires and things like that. Um, sidewalk connection out to Leonard Street, to the existing sidewalks that come into the site today, there's an existing crosswalk across there, um, access to the site would use that shared drive aisle between this building and, um, the next building, the, um, Building 15.
Pitney Bowes?
Yeah, the, what was that, sorry?
Is it Pitney Bowes?
Yeah, Pitney Bowes, that's what I was trying to think of, uh, Pitney Bowes, so there's, um, shared access agreements a lot, uh, across that lot to allow this lot to access, uh, Leonard Street.
I, I believe that was previously permitted as a common driveway as well, so.
Correct. Um, site layout-wise, that's really it, we've got the truck loading in the back, um, trash and, and recycling would be handled similar to the other buildings, where one of the loading docks typically is a trash dumpster, one loading dock is a, um, compactor for cardboard and recyclables. Um, we designed this area back here to accommodate, um, not, uh, to accommodate tractor trailers, um, and then, just kind of layout-wise, we have, um, had this reviewed by the fire department for their access needs, and they've, they've signed off on that. Uh, from stormwater standpoint, we're proposing three practices, so starting at the front of the site, we have up along Leonard Street, a combination sand filter infiltration basin that handles the parking lot, then you'll see this area kind of shaded in the middle here, um, that's an underground infiltration basin that handles the roof and some of the higher flows that, um, back from the infiltration basin up near Leonard Street, and then in the back, we have another, um, complex, a sand filter infiltration basin that handles the truck area. All of those practices are sized to meet, um, Mass DP and the town standards for infiltration, water quality, and peak continuation. The stormwater was reviewed, um, at the site, so then what the, uh, stormwater mostly was reviewed by the conservation agent, uh, and the, uh, their peer review, Pat Brennan, um, we did get some minor comments, we responded to them, but we've addressed all of his comments as well. This little area back here, you can kind of see this orange, the curved orange line and then the curved dash line, that little pocket was the area that I mentioned before, that, that's the area within the 200-foot riverbank that was previously disturbed, that we would be, um, reseeding as part of this. So, um, that's the only work within, really, any wetland resource or buffer or anything like that. Then I'll just touch on utilities quick and get on the landscaping. Um, so as Don mentioned, all the utilities for this are stubbed to the property currently. Um, there's an existing sewer manhole brought into the, the front here of, um, the property right north of that first entrance. Uh, electric is also brought down as a pole here, the transformer, you know, there. Um, there's two water stubs to the property, domestic and fire, um, six inch and a two inch. We're working with, uh, Water and Sewer Commission on that, they've reviewed the plans, they're also just waiting to make sure that no major changes come out of the planning board process, and then we'll be going to that board. Um, the only change they potentially might make is based on the distance of the new water surfaces, they might ask us to do new tabs, but, um, the most recent feedback I've gotten seems like we'll be able to utilize existing tabs, but that's really their only comment, the capacity and, uh, flow is adequate for this size building and this use. There is an existing fire hydrant out front, um, near that, where those stubs come across. Um, that's really utilities, and then the last I really have to show is the landscape plan. So we need the town's requirements for, um, parking lot landscaping, shade trees, all that, so, um, kind of give a wide view, we're, we're adding street trees along both frontages of Leonard Street and East Main, so all the way down, um, the back of the building, a little bit past the back of the building, even though that area is set down, um, we're doing a row of street trees, basically encapsulating that whole corner, uh, I believe they're, uh, glory maples, um, and then we've done some arborvitae's in the back to screen the, the detention basin back there. In the front parking lot, we're doing a combination of those same street trees to wrap around Leonard Street, and some more ornamental stuff as you get into the parking lot, birches, locusts, things like that, and the islands, and then just a mixture of some screening plants around the transformer, and then some more, you know, decorative plantings around the, the front entrance of the building. Um, that's, that's really it, as Don said, we've, um, got the okay from fire, water and sewers, just waiting to, um, see if the planning board has any comments, same with Concom, they, um, directed staff to draft the approval, um, and then just, they're going to vote on it, and then close the hearing, and you can vote on it the next hearing to make sure that planning doesn't have any major comments or changes. Um, that's basically a peer review, um, we've addressed all their comments regarding that, and again, we're not asking for any type of any, um, dimensional relief, or waivers or anything like that, so. That's the project, um, if you have any questions, Don and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
From a, just looking in comparison to the, the building next to it, this is proposed at 32,000 square feet, the building next to it is 200?
125.
125, so we're.
And then 220 is the next big one.
For scale, the one that you, the more recent ones, the one way in the back, Building 12, that was 60,000, so it's kind of that chopped in half.
Just in relation to the Pitney Bowes one right next to it, so we're talking a third the size, somewhere a little bit less than that, so.
A quarter.
Third to a quarter.
Same site?
Same site.
Okay.
You can actually, in the rendering, you can see kind of it in scale with the Pitney Bowes in the back, it's the same kind of facade.
Do you have a tenant lined up?
Uh, this one, no. The market right now is anywhere from 20,000 square feet to 50,000 square feet, where the smaller tenants are, are searching around for their final destination. Uh, the bigger buildings that have been built, uh, whether it's us or the surrounding towns, are starting to waiver a little bit on the bigger requirements. This will be the last in Phase 1, and there's just one lot left in Phase 2 that we have not started permitting.
Additional questions for the applicant at this time? Obviously, this is different than the, the initial proposal for retail, but the, uh, the last three years have been interesting.
They have, um, but if I can offer, they had a retail tenant with a letter of intent.
It was supposed to be a liquor store that was supposed to be in this property.
That's not even the one I'm talking about, and they approached the town to go to the state for an additional liquor license as indicated. I, I, I understand, and we've heard this across the board about retail, however, we approved this based upon there being retail and commercial services that would be available to the town, not only just to support us and the people within here, but I don't want to look at another 40-foot warehouse right along, it's an eyesore. And if you don't mind, I'm going to share my screen.
I think you have to lunk up. I think you have to start the screen sharing.
This is what was sold to us at town meeting, three small retail shops that could be subdivided to provide retail and commercial services, restaurants, you know, takeout, convenience stores. There's supposed to be a marijuana retailer in here, the marijuana retail subcommittee approved the second retail license for location in this spot, solely on this spot. They were not the second strongest applicant, they were not the third strongest applicant, they were not even the fourth strongest applicant. They got this site because of where they're located, and they had a letter of intent. And then we went to the state to get additional liquor licenses, so I, I, I'm very annoyed, there's not much I can do about it, but I feel like this is a bait and switch.
I know, the lender, which is our lender, didn't approve financing to have a marijuana approval, something they don't approve on, that's not government-backed, and they said no.
I get it, how'd you get a letter of intent to them then?
I'm not sure, that's, that's how that all went down. And the stability of the retailers, we're not here to build it and hope they will come type with retail, it's an expensive project. The third building there went to support the parking lot for Pitney Bowes, which is a major tenant in Building 4, and supporter of the town, and employees, and, and employs a lot of people in there. So it, it wasn't like we just made it go away.
I get it, it's just, this looks a lot different than what.
We've had hotels approach us, we've, we've had others, but the stability of putting it there is not there, and to put that, I'm not saying on our shoulders they go and do it, if it's not there, it's not there. And everything we've done in Phase 1, as well as Phase 2, we've, we've promised and fulfilled what the requirements were from the planning board, from conservation, um, right down the line, and I think we're on our fourth year, uh, third or fourth year of construction, and probably two years of permitting prior to that.
I get it, it's just not what was approved by this town. And I'm clearly annoyed by that.
Well, you're about to interrupt me, just so I can get it clear in my head, but you referred to that, what they presented at town.
Yeah, so these are.
We didn't vote on it, that'd be a bludgeon, just a surmise of what could be there.
Well, it was sold as.
I'm trying to remember.
That is correct.
We ran into this three other times.
Yeah.
We ran into this with Phase 2 as well.
No, there was something else.
Phase 2 was originally in the back, I'm not sure if that's on the same screen, Laura.
No, there's something else.
It was originally smaller.
It can be.
It was originally smaller flex buildings, and.
I'm saying it wasn't.
And they got a tenant, which is Yale, for that back, so that those smaller buildings turned into a big building for Yale, which I understand.
I completely support that change, yeah.
The difference, so, this is, I mean, town meeting approved the change to the zoning to industrial. Whether or not town meeting understood the range of outcomes that could come from that, I can't speak to.
Yeah.
Everybody was in the auditorium.
You'd only have to ask 100 people.
But if there was.
No, that, that was a packed auditorium. That was packed in the auditorium.
Yeah.
That took up the entire bleachers in the auditorium, that wasn't 20 people scattered around.
My brain is a little bad.
That was in the gym, actually, that one.
It was in the gym, it was insane.
It was way back.
Yeah, that was.
It was.
Eight, nine years ago?
Right in the end of the slide, and you nail this vote, where it could have been a 40B on Phase 2.
Yeah, so that, that was the, yeah, so.
If they, if they were, if I knew they had nobody interested in those retail and commercial spaces, I'd be fine with it, do what you want to do, but they've, they've supported two different projects now, and want to put up a 40-foot warehouse, next to a 40-foot warehouse.
The, yeah, the, the landscape around marijuana lending is so weird and convoluted, and spend that way for six years, yeah.
You don't have to tell me, I, I know, but.
But, yeah, no, it's.
You don't offer a letter of intent.
That is generally something that should be vetted as part of that process.
That's how they go on retail license. Do we have two retail locations in this town right now? No. Should we? Yes.
So, um, yeah, so. I think your frustration is understandable, and thank you for expressing your thoughts.
I know there is nothing I can do about it, but I, I'm not going to sit here and say, yes, I'm great with this.
Okay. Um, do you have additional comments or questions for the applicant? I don't know if you want to keep that down or pull it up.
Oh, sorry, sure.
No, it's okay.
And that was the side of the former Quentin Farm.
Yes, it was, Peter, thank you. Okay. So the applicant's presented 32,000 square foot warehouse, which does not have a tenant lined up.
Realistically, the only thing we can say no to is the size of their warehouse, that's, this really is a.
This is, it's a site plan review, so we can set conditions, uh, which would be, as we've seen, the decisions have to be reasonable and related.
Realistically, the only thing we can say no to is the size of their warehouse. That's, this really is.
It's a site plan review. So we can set conditions, uh, which would be, as we've seen, the decisions have to be reasonable and related to the site and not necessarily.
No, we can't tell how big they.
I believe in the industrial zone, there has to be a special permit to go to make an industrial building over ten thousand square feet. That's why we're giving a special permit for the increase in size over ten thousand square feet.
It's listed here as a site plan review, just to confirm. Is this a special permit or a site plan review request?
We were directed or intentionally, I think it's filed as a site plan review.
That's all right.
Yeah. Okay.
Definitely should be used as stable. It's a special permit for any industrial use over ten thousand square feet.
But there's no use.
It's a warehouse.
That's a use. It's an empty warehouse, that's a use.
Warehouse. Warehouse shipping and distribution.
Okay. Well, we can confirm that. Why am I?
Same with commercial spaces.
Yeah. There is generally a trigger for size based on the use table. So we can confirm that if the, um, where am I? That's not going to.
At the bottom of the list?
Four point one. No. So here we go. Residential uses, commercial uses.
I'm pretty sure you're correct, because we had to get a special permit on Phase Two of both buildings.
Okay.
So, um, I guess we would ask for a continuance to file for the special permit and then come back for both applications at a future meeting.
Okay. Yes. So I apologize if the guidance that you were seeing.
No, I don't even know. I want to say if it was guidance or anywhere, we just missed it. I don't, you know, but we'll, we'll file the special permit, um, in addition to the site plan review.
Okay.
Um, and I guess be heard at a, for the special permit, we'll have to come back and do a little bit of a presentation and, um, answer any more questions, folks.
Okay. Yeah. This would, this would meet both conditions, halves of the or in that statement. And just for the point of, I have left the Zoom meeting, so hold on. I was going to pull it up.
Oh, I got it from the door.
Go for it. My laptop has the battery capacity of a chinchilla, so.
I'm surprised the town planned it and catch that. Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yes. No, you're, uh. Thank you, Alan.
We're not the town planner. If that was that town staff, that would have been different.
You are doing an admirable job, Brian, so thank you again. But yes, so, um, understanding that the applicant has stated that they'll ensure that they're, file them to the correct, permitting and relief applications, um, and we can, um, review that at a later date. If this is being filed as a special permit, then I'm going to assume we're going to have noticing requirements, which was.
So we'll have to read out what's a special.
We have meetings in December of the twelfth and the nineteenth. I'm not sure if we feel that that's enough of a turnaround time for all of that to be complete in terms of noticing and posting. Brian, do you have an opinion on how long that process generally takes, or whether we're better off looking at January?
For the nineteenth, you need to have it done by.
The end of the month?
Yeah, I was going to say, it's usually three weeks. It's usually about like three weeks, the Friday before you get the, that newspaper ad. And then the rest of the day ends in two weeks. So, um, I guess we could really request the, the notice of the nineteenth, but, um, we'll get that in this week and at that moment.
Yeah. Given, given the next week is a, a half week for some people and a not even week for other people, we understand if that timing ends up needing to shift.
Yeah, we'll try to get everything in this week. Try to make an application.
Okay.
So, yeah, um, yeah, we would ask to shoot for the nineteenth for now. And if we have to push it out, we'll talk to Brian.
I think the nineteenth is just looking like a relatively long agenda, but not as long as this evening. So, um, we can all make those determinations as we get closer. Okay. So we're looking for a motion to continue.
Make a motion to continue site plan now. Am I making?
You're just continuing the site plan.
Yep.
Because it's the element exists.
Yep. Make a motion to continue site plan review two zero eight eight one two, December nineteenth. Exactly.
Thank you. Jim and Eric, is there any further discussion? Okay. I will go through the roll. Eric?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll see you again. Okay. And I apologize for keeping all of you waiting. Sometimes agendas do not get light when we wish them to. But thank you. Laura, if you can release the screen.
You got it.
So if you can just go ahead and introduce yourself.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Robert Cabral. Uh, this is Taylor Perez. We're with Serpeth. For those of you here at home that don't know us, Southeast Regional Planning Economic Development Districts. We're the regional planner that helps Norton and several other towns around here, twenty-seven communities with technical assistance. So we're here with two projects tonight that we've been working with the town. One is navigating Section 3A's multifamily requirements, compliance with that. And the second is a housing production plan. So we'll review some preliminary work related to Section 3A and the goals and strategies, draft goals and strategies for the housing production plan. And we're excited to get your honest feedback on that. Just in terms of a framework for what we're going to talk about tonight. We've been working with the town, this is related to Section 3A, we'll start there. We're working with the town and the Massachusetts Housing Partnership on a fully funded, so no cost to the town, contract to just look at some of the technical aspects around Section 3A compliance, some of the planning stuff. As part of this work where we started, um, we'll review some potential locations where the town could cite a 3A district. And as we go through this, I, I would just encourage as a framework of thinking again, you know, we're, we're doing this to, to reflect the values that Norton wants to have. So we can be thinking, do any of these locations work for Norton? Are there other places that we would like to explore for this? Uh, and so that methodology we're sharing tonight is really a way to start a conversation. And it is a series of recommendations, um, but we want those to be grounded in everybody's lived experiences in town. So that's sort of where we're at tonight. And then why are we doing this tonight? This is the first step. And then after we do this, uh, we would work again. We would pursue funding with MHP, um, and Norton could pursue that. And we've talked to MHP about the possibility of that. And that funding would go towards finalizing a location and working on the language of a bylaw that would be compliant with Section 3A's requirements. And if, you know, if you guys, if you have any doubts in any of the presentation, it's completely okay. We're here to discuss just the best path forward for Norton, and that's what we're here to do. We're here to support you guys. So with all that in mind, I think we can just start off with some of Norton's requirements for Section 3A. So Norton's adjacent community does not host a commuter rail station. Uh, with that in mind, the town is to produce a zoning district that has a gross density of fifteen units per acre, a minimum land area of fifty acres, uh, multifamily housing permitted as of right with no age restrictions, and a unit capacity of seven hundred and fifty units. Uh, this would be, have to be approved by Town Meeting, and the town would have to submit for this compliance by twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. And just to know, it's important to note that this is not a requirement for housing production. It's just a requirement to change the zoning to allow for that production. So sometimes that can be a little bit nebulous or confusing, so just wanted to point that out. And we have some slides that we can bounce back to, but, you know, we want to not keep you guys here all night scrolling through our presentation. But if you want, uh, you can scroll through quick. And we have some, a community profile that just looks at demographic information. Again, stuff you guys probably already know about your town better than we do. Uh, but we can zoom back to these slides and discuss any of them in detail if you'd like. But that's just a little bit of context around the requirements and, and some of those early slides. And I'll pass it over to Taylor right now to discuss sort of the next part of this presentation.
Good evening, folks. Like Rob said, my name's Taylor Perez. I'm going to kind of go through some of this very quickly, because I know it's all late. I think we all are pretty fatigued. Like Rob said, we also looked at some on-the-ground residential uses. We looked at lot sizes to get an idea of where there's varying density. Um, and you folks should have access to this, so you can scroll through, look at the maps at your own leisure. We also, again, just looked at your zoning to figure out if there was any zoning districts we wanted to kind of use as a starting basis for a Section 3A compliant district. At this time, I don't believe we have any recommendations for an existing district. So hence that's kind of talking about citing. We also just made a cute little table, kind of talking about the different uses that are currently allowed in your zoning. Again, you can kind of look through this at your own leisure. And we conducted site visits back in, I believe, I think we were out in late April and again in June. Um, I won't walk through all of these again for the sake of time, but if you folks are interested, you can click. It brings you to a nice zoom in of the map. We did some on-the-ground and drone photography of all of the sites, again, just to see what's going on in Norton. What does the density look like in different areas in town? And it just helps us get to know your community better as we're making some of these recommendations. Does anyone have any questions before I get into this about the requirements that Rob went over or anything I've just discussed?
I'm going to hate myself, and I'm going to ask a question anyway.
Okay.
I know there has been some pushback from other towns as it relates to this entire regulation and process. Other than we need to comply with the regulations that are on file right now, is there any expectation, hope, anything on the horizon in terms of changes or adjustments that you see happening to these, or you think it's?
I don't foresee anything. Either, uh, EO HLC, formerly DHDD, has made adjustments to their guidelines in consideration of feedback that they have received previously from the first iteration of the guidelines that were drafted. They did add some adjustments about public water and sewer service being kind of a requirement for an area that you're considering. They removed that. There was a lot of discussion about mixed-use requirements and allowing for units within required mixed-use districts to count towards unit capacity. They did make some adjustments for that, I believe, in August of this year. Um, so I do think that they have made adjustments to the guidelines, but I don't foresee substantial changes or I, I am not in a position to predict any substantial changes beyond what we have in front of us.
Okay. Yeah, I know there's been, uh, Middleburner in particular was very vocal about what they're, how they felt about this regulation.
For sure.
Different things, so.
For sure.
Real quick, too, you might have said this, sorry. Does it have to be continuous or can it be broken up into?
It can be, it can be in sub-districts. There are some continuity requirements regarding that at least one of the districts has to be greater than fifty percent of the size. So if you wanted to have three sub-districts, you could have, you could do that. So you can't break it up, but there are some kind of continuity requirements that you have to consider and do it, so.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, if you have a sub-district sort of, I would say it's pretty common sense. So, I mean, if we got into the specifics of speculating on a footprint of a district, it's just that you have, if your sub-districts can't be like chopped up, there can't be over barriers between them.
Right.
Not thirty of them.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, or you couldn't have a large nature preserve bisecting a single sub-district or something like that. But it's probably something we would be able to see from an area that it wouldn't work.
We would, that would be fly-while before we got there.
Is there a minimum sub-district size?
So for you, in your instance, if I'm understanding the guidelines correctly, and I'm happy to go back and look at this in greater detail, your minimum requirement's fifty acres. So given that, I believe, again, it's fifty percent for at least one sub-district has to comprise the total sum of the fifty acres, it would be at least twenty-five acres for one sub-district. But again, I'm happy to confirm that.
The, the smallest possible big one.
Yes.
There's not a smallest possible supplementary one.
Right. I believe there's also even a requirement that you cannot have a sub-district that's not greater than five acres in size. So there is, that is something to consider. That's your smallest, smallest, and your biggest, smallest is twenty-five.
You wouldn't want to do something that would otherwise look like spot zoning or whatever in another context. That would be, I guess, the guideline I would, without having the requirements in front of me.
Correct.
I suggest.
I thought so, yeah. Any other questions? Great. So the meat of this technical assistance was really the suitability analysis. If any folks are familiar with the MHP webinar series, that was released kind of at the beginning when we started really talking about Section 3A last year. This is the methodology we presented as a webinar. Um, so it's just tailored here for Norton. It's a combination of all sorts of different GIS layers and, you know, our kind of current understanding of what's going on in town. And I'm just going to kind of walk through how we did it, where we ended up, and then we'll get to potential citing suggestions. But as Rob said, we're always open to having conversations about other areas in town. And so we started this analysis by making a ten-acre grid. So every square you see on this map is about, it's just under ten acres in area. And we like this because there are other options. We can do parcels, we could do census tracts, but they're not all a uniform geography. We don't want to say this person's parcel, you know, this person's land is greater in suitability, this one isn't. We don't want to make any implications like that. So we feel that this ten-acre grid is the most equitable, I suppose, least biased geography. And we also like that you can kind of like plug and play. So knowing that you have a fifty-acre size requirement, when we get to kind of the score, and you can be like, oh, these five cells are highly suitable. That's fifty acres. And then if you want to match parcel boundaries to it at a later point in time, et cetera, you can do that. And so we have two kind of main categories of group scores that I'm going to go through. They're either a push group score or a poll group score. So that's essentially if there is like, um, natural resources and whatnot, that will be considered a push. We don't want to put development near key habitats, water resources, et cetera. And a poll group will look at key infrastructure and things like water and sewer service, et cetera. Those are things that will positively attract development. So think of it as negative weighting, positive weighting. Any questions about any of that before we get into this? Great. So our first group score, I'm going to go through this kind of quickly, but please feel free to stop me at any point, is the natural spaces group score. You can see these bullets describe each of the kind of spatial considerations that went into this. This is a push group score. So again, higher concentrations, these darker colors are areas we don't necessarily want to zone, do multifamily housing or things like, they have high concentrations of poor habitats, natural landscapes, et cetera. So in these push ones, darker is less suitable. We have a climate resilience group score. Uh, it's the same thing. It's a push, so darker is less suitable. That includes wetlands, FEMA flood zones, with emphasis on one percent flood zones and poorly draining soils.
There's a lot of wetlands in Norton, so.
Yeah. It's, there is kind of some clear delineations in certain group scores, but in this one, it's very, um, you know, it's following wetland boundaries and regulatory flood zones, so it's not as clearly delineated as something like this, which is the water resources group score, another push group score, which looks at presence of aquifers, surface water protection areas, et cetera. So again, these areas where there is high concentrations of water resources are less suitable. Now we're in our first poll group score, so this is again, a higher concentration is more attractive for a multifamily zoning district. This is the key infrastructure group score, which is looking at areas with known water service, sewer service, and close to kind of key amenities that we feel are, again, key infrastructure. So we're flipping the legend out. Darker areas are more suitable. We have another poll group score. This is kind of what we're calling quality of life. It's looking at things that we just, we want to be near, we want folks to live near. So access to schools, sidewalks, transit options, recreational open spaces, places of worship, et cetera. Darker concentrations are more suitable here. This is the last group score. It's the only one that's mixed, and this is because it considers your twenty thirteen priority areas. I don't know if you folks are familiar with the PDA PPA project that occurred as a, um, accompaniment of the South Coast Rail project. So this is based on those twenty thirteen community designations. So we're looking at priority development areas, priority protection areas, and then also some key zoning districts. Um, and so again, this is where more suitable is darker. But you will see some of these lighter areas. These are priority protection areas, for example, and that's why they're kind of flashing as we don't want to put anything here.
Just for clarity, none of the members of the board were on the board at that time.
This was some time ago. We are actually doing an update right now, so if you have any questions about that, talk to Maria. Who's our colleague right there. So all of this essentially comes together in a final suitability score. We take all of the scores of each individual group score and weight them equally into a final score from zero to one hundred. And so I'll actually. And so I'll actually blow this map up a little bit. You can see here, these darker greens, we kind of refer to these as like the A-plus areas. They score between 80 and 100 in terms of the total suitability scoring. These areas in orange and red are, you know, not failing, but we're just, we don't want to typically look at those areas. We're always open to conversations if there is a reasonable, you know, reason we put these here. But again, we're kind of focusing on these darkest green areas.
So I'm seeing 123.
Yes.
140, and that's pretty much it.
So we have Mansfield Ave., right? This area kind of flashed, too. I know you folks have a commercial plaza right here. I know there is an assisted living facility here, a co-op mobile home park, some single-family homes, obviously right near the Xfinity Center. This was an area of high suitability. Again, this is away from key natural resources, and it was a town designated priority development area during that 2013 update. The only primary disadvantage we did want to make folks aware of is that it's not really near any quality of life amenities. So if that's something that you folks value and think is important when citing this district, it is something to consider.
Yes, I live in that area, right? So should I be worried?
I don't think so, but.
You shouldn't.
It's not gonna...
We're just talking about changing zoning. We're not putting anything there at all.
Not gonna throw you off.
This means you might have apartments nearby.
Ooh!
I think there actually, there's an existing apartment complex that's being built on this parcel, I believe, right here next to the plaza.
Yes, there is. That's a 40B.
And so like you said, also, western portions of Route 123 approaching the Attleboro line flashed. If you folks remember from the quality of life suitability score, that was the highest scoring area was around here. It's also a priority development area, as designated again during the 2013 process. The only disadvantage is we wanted to make note of is that it's close to some regulatory flood zones and that it does abut some key natural resources. And then the last suggestion, and again, these are all suggestions, is Norton Center. It has a lot of quality of life amenities and it is a town designated priority development area. But we understand that it's fairly built out and it does abut some key natural resources.
And traffic would be a nightmare.
Yes, I'm sure it would not necessarily be fully ideal, but given its suitability, we did just want to highlight it. And so I'm gonna pause here and just kind of let folks digest that. These are our three suggestions, but as Rob said, they're just suggestions. They're based on the data that we had. We're always open to having conversations about other areas in town, but we're just hoping to provide you folks some guidance before we kind of pursue next steps. So I'll pause. If you have questions, Rob and I are happy to take them.
You mentioned that you applied equal weighting to all of the criteria.
Mm-hmm.
Have any of the towns asked you to weight one more than the other?
It's possible. And so in, we actually haven't, we've only done suitability scoring, I believe, for two towns at this point in time. And then we did a third for our MHP webinar, which was North Attleboro. We did present some scenarios for weighting based on what folks valued. Right here, we kind of call this the best balance scenario. But there are other weighting options that we could examine, whether it's away from key natural resources or really focused on quality of life, et cetera.
It's just math, yeah.
Yeah, and that could change it.
But it's a good point, and I think that the way we look at this is, it's a tool to help you kind of make decisions. So if, looking at this, you're like, hey, this is actually more helpful if we weight this more, that's a very reasonable thing and probably a helpful exercise to go back and change some of those weights. It could be really useful. So it's kind of what people collectively value when it comes to that. Because these are big decisions. So, yeah, we're just trying to provide the best tool we can. And to the point of not doing this in more communities, some, the reason why is some... All districts they already view as suitable, for example, something closer along the lines to, we just have to make minor modifications to set district and then it would be compliant. We typically explore this in a town like Norton where it doesn't seem something, like there's something readily obvious to us, at least. We figure this is the best tool we can provide.
Correct.
I like the tool and the approach.
Great, thank you.
Those two areas are, there's just points to the MPTA stations.
Talking about Mansfield and Charlie. Going one, Mansfield is, Mansfield is one zone closer for people riding and commuting around.
The Mansfield end is near Tweeter, Great Woods, whatever one calls it.
Mansfield's near Tweeter.
Tweeter Center, geez.
It used to be Great Woods, that was when I was little, but. That's the best area in town. I mean, it's the least intrusive to the rest of town, in short. It's already got concerts, the highway's right there. TPC has events sometimes.
The traffic impact on concerts, I would certainly agree with that. They cut off Reservoir Street. For me, all right, I have to find that sort of difference.
I mean, I live off Reservoir Street, too. I mean, the concert traffic for sure backs up, but putting 750 residents anywhere else in town is certainly not gonna create traffic wherever else that is.
You're gonna put it on a big pipe roadway-wise.
But this was the area that was the quality of life was the low score?
It's not near schools.
All the schools.
It's just not near schools, yeah.
It's not near schools or any public, anything.
It's not really near anything, yeah.
It's not really, but it's not like...
But it might if it gets 750 residents.
Well, no, I mean, but it's, yeah, you have to go through the center to get to anything, basically.
Yeah.
But they might get amenities if there's people there to serve.
Yeah, and there's other stuff around there. It's not a ghost town. How many grid squares was in that area?
So it looks like, I should have had borders on here, I'm sorry. It looks like 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, say, 14.
So it's, it's almost three times the size that we actually need to specify under this.
Right.
That's a great point, too, is like, the suitable areas don't necessarily correspond to the size of a district or a sub-district. So it's like, still very generally, to isolate one of these.
Yeah, we can pick a third of that area if we wanted to.
Yeah, fantastic. I mean, I think that's ideal to focus on.
And if we want to look at the Charlie one again, is the, just as the comparison, because I'm gonna say that I'm not presenting, let's put a bunch of apartments in Town Hall, in Town Center. There's no way that...
The historic zone and everything, too?
Yeah, no.
No, we know most of it.
We're barely seeing some outlook.
But that one, yeah, there's a whole bunch of little, there's a lot of residential, some mixed-use commercial, some village commercial, and some industrial in there, but...
Look, the smaller the lot size, the better for this type of environment. Where like, down the Grove right now, where I live, that's about 5,000 square foot lots. You would only need to put two units per 5,000 square foot lot and you'd make the MPTA requirement. So like 10,000 square foot lots would be four units. And you'd make the requirement without any really large buildings.
Yeah.
It's sort of like, yeah, you're the worst of it.
Brian, you're pulling up a letter from Water and Sewer, correct?
Yep.
And their recommendation is...
I can just...
Yeah, do you want me to, I can move it out here if you want to.
It'd be easier to share the screen with everybody to...
And their preference essentially is...
This part here. As far as placement for multifamilies, if it were up to me, I would recommend those go where there is a current sewer system. This would help to avoid having a building, huge septic system.
Right.
The Grove is sewed.
Yeah.
I don't want it to turn into a city, but I'm saying it's pretty, pretty close to extensive, especially from the Mansfield side.
Yeah. And we're just requiring it, and we're requiring it by, are we requiring this by right?
So it would have to be multifamily as defined as three units or more by right with no age restrictions.
But I think site plan review is permitted under Section 3A district.
It only has to be...
But it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be something where if it's allowed by right, for a lot of special permit projects that we look at, the applicant proposes putting in private sewer to make the development happen. This is, if they're allowed by right to do it, that's probably not on the docket.
I would, I would assume so.
Yeah. So if... So is there existing sewer service?
Do you want me to go back to that key infrastructure?
Yeah, I'm not sure if we have the delineation there for sewer on 140 going up towards Xfinity. Do we have sewer there? Don't you think so?
No.
We don't have it going up Mansfield at all.
No, I don't think yet, not thinking of it.
I have the most recent map.
Yeah, but if it's not going up Mansfield to the other piece of Mansfield, then it's not going up Mansfield at all. Unless it's coming from the town of Mansfield.
And take a left towards, I keep calling it Tweeter. There's a pumping station right there.
Yeah.
On Mansfield Ave.
I'm just knowing that there's not sewer further down Mansfield and toward the center. So there's probably not any sewer higher up Mansfield Ave.
So if I remember correctly, we, the reason we say known water service is we, I think we reached out and I don't know that we had received any updated sewer information. We had an existing parcel layer that was showing where sewer water was available. I think the reason that this darkest area here is flashing is because of the presence of at least water. And if I recall, there may have been some sewer service as well, don't quote me on it.
Yeah, it's possible there's some sewer cross-town stuff, I don't know.
Right, I think it's maybe right here.
Yeah.
The line.
If you don't think that we got input on sewer for this layer of the map, that might be something to supplement.
Sure.
And make, and see if that makes a significant impact on the calculations.
Sure.
For some reason, I feel like there's sewer up there. It just doesn't cross the bridges of the reservoir.
Which area, which area?
From Great Woods to the center.
So this isn't the...
Yeah.
That blue village commercial, I don't think there's any sewer there. But I think there's sewer above that.
So purple is existing, blue is, do you want to share?
Yeah.
Yep.
So right up to Pizza House is sewer.
Sorry, we're kicking you off again. What is?
Right up to, right up to...
So there is sewer up there.
The Rose Brothers, the sewer.
Yeah.
Up to, so there is sewer coming down. It's just the connecting piece that we don't have.
That, that looks reflective with the information we have, yeah.
Okay.
And if this is a yes or no-ish issue for you guys, very high way, we could just like lay this over our findings, too, to just...
Yeah.
Consider it literal thing, too, yeah.
And there's the Grove on the other side.
Yeah, I don't think it's viewed as a yes/no, but if we're proposing something and the proposal that we're making is, has clear impacts, that'll have a financial impact on the town. We just want to be mindful of that. I think that's the only...
For sure.
But the big impact...
But if it's not an issue in that location, then it's not an issue in that location. And that only adds it, gives it more weight to be like, it was on the shortlist before. It's definitely on the shortlist now.
Look, if it's unsewered, it has to be 40,000 square foot minimum, which means every single apartment will have to have at least 15 units, if it's not sewed, right? Any unsewored property has to have 40,000 square feet to install a system. So we can't have undersized lot if it's unsewored. If it's a sewed area, you can have smaller units per building.
I'm actually not sure of the answer to how Section 3 would look at that in overlay district. So I'm not saying you're wrong. I actually don't know the answer to that, do you?
It's our town by law.
Right.
Not sure how...
Do you have specific Board of Health regulations that dictate those? Or are they just defined in your bylaw?
It's just in the law by law.
That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, no, we've had towns that like regulate lot size both in their zoning and sometimes in their Board of Health regulations. So that's why I didn't know that was coming up.
I think it's the zoning.
Okay.
But it would definitely mean that everything outside of a sewed area would have to have 15 units per building at least to make that requirement.
For a septic unit?
To house enough people on an acre to meet the MPTA requirement.
Which...
You need 15 per acre, so.
Yeah, so that makes it challenging.
So if you want anything, if we want triple deckers instead of a tower, we need to allow for a zone with 10,000 square feet. 10,000 square feet, you can have four units. 5,000, you can have two units. It continues on that way, but...
Yeah, that makes sense, so.
But a 45,000 square foot lot could be nine 5,000 square foot lots. It's much more advantageous to have small lots.
Yeah.
What I'm...
But we don't allow it in our town. We don't have a zoning, except for the VCC, nothing allows for us to go down below 40,000 square feet, well, village commercials.
This is, yeah, and that's what we're gonna have to talk about with this whole proposal at the town meeting.
Maybe a future subject. I've been working on zoning, but we should go over that in another meeting.
Yeah.
One thing to consider with what you're talking about, too, is how the Commonwealth might view that in the context of, is it feasible or overly onerous to expect that kind? Like, we'd have to kind of look at a parcel-by-parcel level and we kind of go, say we were to go down the strategy of what you're worrying us against, it would, the Commonwealth may be, development's not possible depending on like the continuity of parcels that could be developed. It would be kind of a technically, we could certainly look at it, be no problem, but it would get a little bit into the weeds on whether that would even be a feasible district potentially at those regulations.
But just two parts that we need to look at as a town itself. One is that, that rule that we have to have 40,000 square foot lot size without, if you're not sewed. But also, we don't have a district design that allows housing on smaller than 40,000 square feet. That's, that needs to be developed.
Yes.
I'm gonna share my screen again and actually, I'm gonna kick it. This is a good segue. There, we kind of outlined next steps. And so just so you folks are aware, this was funded, again, through a contract with MHP for Phase 1 technical assistance for siting a district. That contract has since expired. And so we would have to be looking at a second round of technical assistance with them. And we wanted to discuss with you folks to kind of, again, directionally figure out what we're looking after that. Because I believe as far as where we're gonna, the application has to be submitted by the town. We can't submit on behalf of Norton, so.
So the, the town, would you just submit that by, you mean, probably the town manager and/or the select board?
I think the town manager could just submit it.
I believe so.
Yeah.
Some towns like to have select board, plainboard approval to do these things. And we try to honor that, like whatever works for them.
Yeah, I don't believe that's necessary.
And that's the town requesting assistance for the continued grant funding.
Correct. And we have had conversations with MHP about this possibility of a round two. And so they are aware that this is something that could be on the pipeline if you folks would like to pursue round two funding.
We've highlighted to them that this seems like we're ending the grant with this finding, but we obviously don't have a bylaw.
Okay. So is that the only next step? Are you also looking directionally next step for us about how we feel about the potential siting examples you gave us, or both?
Both, yeah. Yeah, the kind of administrative side you highlighted and that, you know, what your preference is. And we're trying to provide the technical, and we continue to be here and have conversations and offer, you know, whatever we can, but we also have to look to you guys to realize how it works in town.
And are you guys in communication with the town manager in any way or not really?
To the best extent possible.
Female, yeah.
Okay. So... I would, I'm gonna make a motion, because I don't get to do motions. I move that we recommend to the town manager to work with SERPED to submit a request for round two grant funding for this initiative.
Certainly.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay. Eric?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Winning has signed off, so I will vote yes. So, step one.
Check.
Check.
Speed on with that. We need some type of calendar work in back.
Speed on with that. We need some type of calendar work in back. We're gonna have to have public outreach meetings and yada, yada, yada. That's all that's.
It's Maria Jones.
A ton of time, right?
Yeah.
Maria Jones is our, I always get your title wrong, Public Engagement Communications. So we've started some preliminary public outreach work, at least with the H P P work that we did earlier this year and hope to continue through this round of funding. The public outreach via surveys or at interviews with local stakeholders as well, kind of continuing that work.
So.
Same, we just need a timeline too.
Yeah.
We gotta do everything by, we need to find.
Yes.
Kind of next year, is that what it is?
Yeah.
So fall town meeting next year.
Yeah. Spring town meeting would be in May, right?
It's May thirteen twenty twenty-four is the spring town meeting, which I heard from last night's Slough meeting.
Do we feel that have, do you feel it would be overly aggressive to have something for May?
We have other communities taking this approach as well. I think Rob and I understand why someone would take that approach too, because if the article fails at spring town meeting, you have an opportunity to, you know, go back in the ball.
I'm paranoid and cynical, yes.
I understand that, and I think that that's totally fine. I think, so to back up, the application process through M H P is typically pretty quick. Again, because we're in close communication with them, so I don't see that as taking a lot of time. There would be some steps that we would recommend throughout the process, particularly submitting a bylaw to E O H L C for pre-adoption review, which essentially lets us know and lets you folks know that we have checked all the boxes of Section Three A before it goes to town meeting. That way we avoid, you know, bringing an article to town meeting, submitting it if it does get approved, and then them being like, oh, you actually missed this, this or that. And so that's kind of the.
We think that by February, March?
Probably. We've had this discussion with other communities and timelines are very similar.
I was just spitballing that, yeah.
No, but that's pretty.
Pretty much, yeah.
Pretty much, yeah. And so what I would say is, we would do our best to meet those requirements. You know, we've had folks who've discussed potentially having design guidelines associated with those. Those can come at a later point, so that is something to consider. We can just bring the bylaw, refer to the site plan review process, and then also discuss design guidelines at a later town meeting. That's totally fine as far as we understand, but my tentative answer is we can attempt to be as ambitious as possible.
Understood.
Does not hurt, yeah.
Understood.
Thanks for providing that date for the town meeting too.
Yes.
That's been helpful. We're back. It's from.
Thank you.
So that is step one. Step two, any members of the board have any additional directional guidance for the team here in terms of the areas they highlighted, other areas which weren't highlighted?
I have a big focus on mixed use and small lots. We gotta work on that here, but.
Right, I, we will, so there's a compliance model associated with all of this. If you folks are familiar, it's essentially like a highly complicated Excel document that refers to some geospatial data that the Commonwealth provides us and that we also feed into it. We can kind of plug and play in that compliance model to see what different lot sizes we can have to achieve the required one fifteen units per acre density and seven hundred and fifty unit requirement. Because sometimes, you know, we'll have districts that have open space requirements or whatnot, which is totally fine, but that can reduce your total, you know, area eligible to be counted. And so therefore, sometimes you might need to have a district that's bigger than fifty acres to account for that. Or, you know, if you just do the straight fifteen U P A, fifty acres in size, no other kind of like onerous, or I don't want to use the word onerous, but like other considerations to be considered. You'll hit that seven hundred and fifty. So again, needless to say, the dimensional standards and whatnot, we can kind of play around with to achieve those, those requirements.
It's supposed to be more of a round table for the board than this, but I've been working on this for like a year and a half, two years, since before I joined the board, kind of why I joined it. If maybe at the next meeting that we have time, not the next one, not the exact next one, but one of the following, when we have some time to discuss it, maybe we could dissect it. You guys can kind of tear me apart, see what I did wrong.
Sure, we, we won't do that, but we're happy to talk, have a talk show.
I think, I think the application was for the board, not for you.
Oh, sorry.
You, you can join too. Like, you're part of it, but.
Yeah.
But yeah, for sure, everybody. I'm on SERP Ed also as a designated from the board, so.
Oh, you're one of our commissioners?
Yes.
Nice, nice to meet you.
So, directionally, what I heard and saw from reactions from people was that the Mansfield Ave near the Mansfield border seems to be the, to a point, they're top one in our general preference in terms of the siting. But with potential, see if input from, better input from sewer, if we have the most updated, then that's a non-issue, but. Given that that's three times as big as the M B T A need, um, if there's anything. Does anybody not like that site? Does anybody like a different site better? Are there other sites that you're surprised are not on there?
Yeah, I think that the ideal site in town, the chartly end is, is nice. Cause it's, it's mixed use, commercial, village, commercial, and industrial, and residential. It's really the cluster of all of it. The whole south end of town has no real infrastructure. There's no sewer or anything on the bottom half. The whole east side is all water.
Yeah, you're basically getting a farmland or a whole of there, yeah.
Really pretty much from the center up and over, so it's Attleboro.
I wasn't surprised when, with the areas that they had identified. I was sort of surprised the center of town qualified, but.
It has lots of quality of life and it has.
Yeah.
Both of the big access roads, so it has that and has sewer.
But they didn't look at parcels individually.
So it checks, checks a bunch of boxes from that perspective.
I was also thinking in terms of, for some reason in my head, I had it, okay, we kind of have to make it close to a, as close as possible to an M B T A station, so that's why I wasn't thinking the center.
Some towns might have to, but not for Oregon.
Adjacent communities do not, so you have the option to put it anywhere, essentially.
Yep.
Yeah. I think we've given, do you feel like you need any additional guidance from us at this point?
I think this is fine. We will approach the town manager about submitting an application to M H P. We can be in touch with you folks. Brian probably will be in touch about when the application comes through, et cetera, um, execution, et cetera. And then what I imagine you will have to do is have more definitive guidance on if we're like feeling very confident about the Mansfield Ave area, because then we would actually want to start looking at district configurations and whatnot, and I think things would get a little more hands-on at that point. But once we get to that point, you know, for how we're just in the, let's get the second round of funding, let's get this kicked off again and proceed from there. Anything else?
Okay. Anything else that we wanted to ask as relates to the Three A discussion?
I suppose there's one other thing to add, I guess. There, one of the primary, I guess, priority development parcels, which is right next to the Mansfield line or on the Mansfield line, is the only place in town we could run a new rail to without crossing any road or housing. It would cross Great Woods, the same as the other rail line does, but there would be no horns, no traffic stops, no signals. And it could mitigate.
A spur into the existing Providence Line?
Right between Norton and Mansfield, and like concert traffic could arrive by rail, the.
So a Gillette Stadium idea, basically.
Basically, yes, yes, exactly.
Wayne's wife's gonna kill him.
Kind of similar to Gillette Stadium.
Um, okay. That would also potentially lend itself to being next to a multifamily development like Dedham. What, is it Dedham Corporate or Dedham Center? One of those stations is, it's one of those two.
Yep, Dedham Corporate Center Station.
Has a bunch of multifamilies right next to it, so.
Yep.
That doesn't necessarily prohibit that idea.
Legacy place in Fox twenty-five.
I do not know. Whatever entity owns Xfinity would ever be amenable to that?
It doesn't have to go through Xfinity. It can pass through.
But it would help.
I already mapped the parcels. It would go through Mansfield on parcels, but it would not touch Xfinity at all. It could arrive through T P C or next to T P C.
But if somebody's gonna spend ten million dollars on a station, it's probably them. Probably not us.
Maybe some funding from somewhere.
Yeah. It's an interesting thought. I don't think it's prohibitive, but I had never considered that concept. So now my brain is gonna turn that over.
I'll send you a map.
Yeah. I'm just thinking of the Gillette Stadium Station and how they tried to fence it off and people cut through the wire fence in like a day. So, okay. Unless Andy has anything else, we'll say thank you very much to the SERP Ed team.
Thank you. Did you folks want to very quickly discuss the housing production plan goals and strategies? We're also happy just to take you back via email.
Yeah, here's one.
If you have them ready and are willing to share, we can do them quickly and then potentially set the stage for follow-up later, rather than us looking at them cold.
Yes, so I think you folks have actually had this for a few weeks, so I don't know if you've had time to review them. I won't run through them all in great detail. Again, you can kind of revisit your own. We shared, there are four goals here. Pursue funding streams to support local housing production efforts and capacity building. Produce housing options to support underserved populations, including seniors, first-time home buyers slash young families, individuals living alone, veterans. Continue collaboration with local stakeholders and conduct public outreach to determine local housing needs, promote existing housing programs, and to educate the community on housing options. And the final goal, continue to produce and preserve S H I eligible units, subsidized housing inventory, eligible units to maintain the Commonwealth's required amount and support communities' need, as you folks know, you're over ten percent. So hence the question, preserve, maintain that number, et cetera. We have seven housing strategies to accomplish the four housing goals that we've outlined here. Pursue other funding to support housing projects for Norton's most vulnerable communities, including those facing housing insecurity, households with very low incomes, less than thirty percent A M I, veterans, seniors on fixed incomes, and individuals with disabilities. Second, strategies to adopt the Community Preservation Act. Third, strategies to work with a consultant to improve outreach and education regarding subsidized, affordable, and public housing. The fourth, work with the Greater Attleboro-Tonton Home Consortium and the City of Tonton to promote the First Time Home Buyers Program associated with that consortium. The fifth, implement key zoning events to support new housing opportunities in key areas. Sixth, investigate opportunities for adaptive reuse to redevelop underutilized municipally owned buildings. And seven, review the availability of town-owned and tax-saled properties to work in tandem with adaptive reuse goals. Just so you folks know, these last two or so are pretty cookie cutter. We kind of put them in every housing production plan because it's just a good process for the town to undertake. But all the other ones are fairly specific to Norton. And just to kind of preface as well, Rob and I did speak with folks from the Orange Housing Authority recently. And as Maria kind of alluded to earlier, we did conduct stakeholder interviews as a process associated with this housing production plan. I believe you folks might have both the data analysis and the stakeholder summary, engagement summary that we produced on one side of these. So, all that to say, these are the four goals, seven strategies. These will kind of directly guide the narrative associated with the housing production plan. If you folks are comfortable with this, we shall proceed with writing. If you are not, again, please feel free to give a speak back at a later point in time. We're happy to revise.
Okay. In terms of next steps, if we like all these, we will produce a draft plan. You'll have a chance to review the language in that and let us know what you think as well. That's kind of the next steps in the housing production plan.
If we can try and make a commitment as a board just to look at these in maybe the next couple of weeks, and if we have feedback, please pass it along. Otherwise, I'm gonna say it looks pretty good as a, from my perspective to start, so.
Sounds great.
Okay?
Yeah, now we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian, for listening to this interview.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
I only pushed against you a little bit, because I knew what the agenda looked like in front of you, so.
It's my latest one yet.
Thank you for having like a very thoughtful discussion involved, sir. You know, it's, it's really great to do that with you guys, so thank you.
Brian, did you want to do, go into any discussion about YouGov at all, or did?
So, two updates. One, we are changing our permitting system. We are currently going for Open Gov. We are now live as Open Gov. We will probably be closing Permitise at some point. And more than likely tomorrow, I'll give you a sign-in for Open Gov for you guys to use. I'm just gonna verify to make sure that you're going to get the right sign-in and not the one to just view. And the second thing I wanted to talk about briefly is the zoning attorney, are we gonna be able to have more meeting schedules, or do you think two weeks from now is good? Cause all we have right now is decisions to just look over for conditions and A and R. Or do you think we should try for a different date? Because I know the zoning board is also invited to this for the initial meeting to.
So this is a zoning attorney to discuss?
This is a zoning recertification attorney that Maria had set up.
Gotcha.
That we have a grant for.
Okay. So there, you feel the next agenda is a light one? And if we can get them and the zoning board potentially to join us for portion as a joint session, that that would make sense?
Would you feel comfortable doing that, or do you think that you'd rather have a break before twelve or a different date?
I'm okay with having you in the meeting if everybody else is.
No, just our next scheduled meeting, right?
We would be inviting the zoning board to join our meeting. And whenever they're here, it's a joint session and then they leave. Or however. So. They haven't agreed yet, correct? Or did they?
I haven't given them dates. I'm gonna just check to see if the twenty-eighth works for him.
Okay.
But I was gonna ask if you guys also wanted to have some other dates that we could present in case that doesn't work.
The twelfth seems bad, and the nineteenth seems busier, correct?
Right.
So. If it's not the next one, then it's either we would potentially try to join a zoning meeting, or some of us would for a joint session, or in twenty twenty-four. So. Why don't we propose the next meeting to zoning and the attorney? And if that doesn't work, ask zoning what their preference would be for when they want to do it, and then we can see what makes sense.
Okay.
I know you had said the attorney was really trying to get it in this before the end of the year.
Right.
I'm not sure if that's tied to the grant or if that's just tied to wanting to polish it off or.
Well, he's aiming for next fall. He believes that we should do it sooner rather than later to meet the deadline.
Okay. So. Any objections to trying to do it next session? And if that doesn't work, we can discuss scheduling via email. We should probably send it through Brian regardless, but that is not something that's prohibited under Open Meeting laws, scheduling meeting. So. Okay. Anything further for anybody?
Just one thing quick. I should have brought it up earlier and I forgot. Back to Zero Eddie. There's a email from Frank. The subject is Zero Reservoir. It says, I want to touch base about Zero Reservoir, but it's about Zero Eddie. So it's pertinent. It should have been brought up to them tonight, cause I don't think they've seen it. I just wanted to make sure they get it. You can forward it to them and follow up with Frank. There's something they. I just. You know what I'm talking about. Frank messed it up when he sent it to you. No, he, he didn't mean it to give it to me, though. Yes, he meant, he sent it to you, but he sent it with the subject Zero Reservoir. Right. So, but I had it pulled up to talk about, and I completely forgot. And I'm not sure if it was brought up because they had the Water and Sewer Commission meeting today. That's right. That's half of what it says, is they're gonna chalk tonight, but they might, I'll be able to talk tonight. They just have to follow up with Frank before the next meeting. It's a second item for that really, other than just the.
Okay.
I don't want that called.
Okay, thank you. Anything further to discuss this evening?
Just one question on the Open Gov. How long will it take them to move all of the current files from Permitise to Open Gov?
So, right now, we're in the process of having historical data, so right now, we are still using Permitise. I don't know when the historic data is gonna be moved over. I'm sure it's gonna be maybe December. Flawless, I'm sure.
Technical migrations are always flawless. So, we will assume best case, we're on the new system in December, potentially not until next year. There.
I'm just worried about, will we still have access to Permitise? At what point does that go away? Like, if we needed to refer to something old?
I don't know when it's gonna be turned off. I know we had discussed about that. And was unsure when officially our contract ends and then it will decide to eliminate our access.
If there are discussions about the timeline, I would just, if you need me to put this in writing, just that we would obviously want to make sure that anything that was in Permitise is migrated prior to us losing access. And that's, if they get to a point where there's this last one percent of stuff that we can't move over, then download it in Dropbox, I don't know. Something. So. Don't turn off, don't, and I'm sure that Permitise will take our money to leave it open for a month if we need to. Not that I want to spend money. It's how SaaS companies work. Okay, anything further?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion in a second. No hearing, no. Motion in a second. No hearing, no further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions. Thank you very much, everybody.